To call this meeting to order.
Okay.
For the purposes of the open meeting law, this meeting is being video and audio recorded tonight. Our first order of business is to preview an application. Nineteen Park Street, it's a special permit. Is the application Mark Forsberg here?
Right there.
Okay, good. All right, so you're -- the purpose tonight is just to review your application, make sure everything's in order, and then we'll set a date and a time specific for the public hearing for this, which will be, you know, at our next regularly scheduled meeting. In case you haven't gone through this process before, this will literally take us five minutes tonight. And then we'll ask the detailed questions at the public hearing in case any butters want to come and attend. So Marie, in terms of the checklist here, is everything in order? All right, the special permit they're requesting is for F-4B demolition and reconstruction?
Of our existing structure that's not conforming with the structure.
Okay.
And it approaches into the side setback. And he's proposing to demo and rebuild the same footprint.
Okay.
But add a little addition to away from the side setback.
Okay, okay. And so we've got a certified plot plan, so that looks good. All right, butters will all be notified. Okay, and you're clear what the bylaw is, the relief that you're looking for, you understand how that works?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, good. This is, you know, this is fairly routine, so it's not like it's going to be a long, onerous process. We'll schedule this hearing for our next business meeting, which will be -- I'm gone in February for two and a half weeks on travel. We're at the last week of January now.
It'll be into March.
It'll be into March.
What's the last week of February? Are you back then?
I am back the last week of February.
What? So Marie is gone that week.
Are you gone that week, Marie? Matt's second.
When are you going, Mike?
I'm gone this week, and this week, and back this week.
There or is it?
Yeah, that's --
You have to advertise.
You gotta advertise two weeks.
Yeah.
If this is all we're gonna do at that meeting.
Up to late evening or early morning.
For this hearing, yeah.
If you have most of them.
All right. All right, all right, why don't we schedule this then for the first week in March?
The fifth.
The fifth, is everyone available March 5th?
Yeah.
No?
I'm skiing in Utah.
Skiing in Utah, all right. Jason?
Yep.
Right here.
Yep.
Can you carry a ski trip?
Yeah.
Must be nice. I have a question for the --
Yes.
Is there an existing foundation under the barn?
Yes. It's -- it -- part of the biggest problem with the barn is that it has a basement in it, and it's a fieldstone foundation, and there's sections of it you can see right through the daylight. I've had a few contractors come in to look at it to try to rehab it, and they said it would be probably more cost-effective to try to demo it and reconstruct it. There's rotten beams in there, there's insect damage, there's mice damage.
Now, I was just curious about the cement structure of the building.
Yeah, I mean --
It's gonna be totally taken away?
Yes.
So it'll be a two-story barn, basically.
Hold this while you're talking?
Sure.
So it'll be a two-story building when you're done?
Uh, no, we'd like to fill the foundation that's there, just pour frost wall and slab and build a new structure on top.
Is the well active?
Yes.
Is it an active well?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
And we sort of looked into other locations on the property, but my septic system is, if you're looking at the plan, it would be to the right of the house, if you're looking at it from the street, and then to the back of the house, there's a, like, an incline that's basically all ledge. And if you go behind the second barn, it's, it's just like basically a cliff down to nowhere. So.
Now, I was just curious if the, if you're demoing the entire structure, the cellar, the basement structure, and I noticed you're shoving the barn, putting in addition, could the whole thing have been moved another 10 feet, or is that where you said the ledge is, where?
Uh, not exactly. I think if I move it, then my access to the barn, the, like, the doors to the barn would be on, uh, if you're looking at it, be on the right side.
Oh.
Um, so I wouldn't, wouldn't be able to drive a vehicle in and be able to enter the barn without being in my backyard too much.
Gotcha.
Um, the other thing is, I may be too close to the house. The existing structure's about 17 feet tall, so according to, I think it's F-4B, I have to match the same height of the new structure. So I would be, I guess the height of the structure, I have to be away from my house. So I, my distance in between would be a little close. So.
We'll get into this in further detail during the public hearing.
Yep.
All right, unfortunately Dawn won't be with us, but let's schedule --
That's why I ask my questions, you know.
Okay, all right, that's good, Chris. Any others?
No.
All right. We'll schedule this hearing for, if you can make a motion, Chris, for March 5th.
Seven forty-five.
Seven forty-five.
Make a motion for a public hearing on March 5th at seven forty-five to discuss Nineteen Park Street Norfolk, Mark Forsberg.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. For a special permit in accordance with chapter 40B, 48.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, good. So we'll see you back.
I do have one question. Is there any other specific things you guys may need during that?
Public hearing?
Yeah.
Pictures would be great.
Okay.
If you have a couple of pictures.
I also have a, a plan of the new building we'd like to put in that place. It has the old one and the new one kinda side by side, so.
Okay, great.
But yeah, I can take some photographs and stuff like that.
Yeah, pictures, pictures are always worth a thousand words.
Okay.
So, good.
Thank you.
We'll look forward to seeing you on the --
Fifth.
It'll be at seven forty-five.
Seven forty-five, yeah.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
It may not start right at seven forty-five, we generally are pretty prompt, but you'll be the first one.
Okay.
First case to be heard that night, so we may review some minutes, that takes 10 to 15 minutes, then we'll get going on yours.
Okay.
Going right around that time.
Perfect.
Thanks a lot for coming in.
Thank you.
Okay. Pat, do you wanna come on over? How are you? How are you tonight?
Anybody counsel?
Do you have the information on this that we talked about last time?
Did you say the information?
Oh, just the language, the condition, the condition number and all that?
No.
Oh, okay.
I'll have to get it, but it does.
Let me see if I have it.
And Pat probably has it.
Figured out I don't need a mic, huh?
Right here, it is right here. Hmm? Could be dead.
Again, a number of members missed the executive session we had, so, you know, it seems to be an absenteeism, seems to be a problem. Bob and I were discussing penalties at the executive session for those who don't come.
You made a mistake?
I forgot. Mistakes will not be tolerated, right, Bob?
Not with this board.
That's right.
Very tough.
And severe penalties will ensue.
Right.
I thought you were doing it from the beach, sending emails.
Pat, what's the condition number that we're referring?
Number nineteen.
Number nineteen.
Nineteen of, um, two thousand four, I forget if it's a ten year.
Nineteen G, page nine, I've got it right here, okay. Who worked on it?
Oh, yeah.
That's actually easy, I can do that even better.
All right, we've got two more minutes before we can begin this continuation of the public hearing. Did you come from Boston, Pat, or were you running around today?
Uh, mostly running around. But, um, to go into this, I would make a point.
Was he supposed to send you your numbers?
More, more stuff, yeah.
You know the numbers he sent so far, right?
No.
He sent them to you, you didn't get them?
I did, I haven't looked at them.
Basically was without septic or sewer, but he hadn't looked into that yet.
Okay.
So it's just way too much. Because he was, he was booked after 2:50, he took out a hundred thousand dollars. And he thinks it's a low number.
You think it's low?
Yeah. Because he doesn't understand any of this yet.
This one?
He really didn't do it.
All right.
You know, it didn't help us a lot, but that number's huge when you think about it. Because you go to the taxpayers and say, give a hundred thousand dollars.
Do we even wanna put down the trail thing? Set up, wasn't to do it?
I don't think you wanna talk about, I don't think you really wanna look into it. I think you're right, it's more you're gonna have to ruffle your feathers and say that we're gonna go after you.
You think we should say we're gonna go after you?
Yeah.
All right, it's seven forty-five, we're going to open the continuation of the public hearing for Norfolk Town Center. It's a continuation of a previous hearing. Pat, if you can bring the board up to refresh our memory on the exact number and, that we've been discussing regarding the infrastructure at Town Center, and then I'll overlay that with a conversation we had with the Board of Selectmen, and hopefully the board can have a discussion and make a plan.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and board members. I'm Patricia Cantor from Copeland and Page Town Council's office, and I've been representing the Board in various proceedings regarding the Town Center project as well as other things, but that's what we're here for tonight. The notice of public hearing said that the Board is going to consider an amendment or modification to condition, condition nineteen of the comprehensive permit based on the two thousand and three oh five relative to the schedule of paving of the condominium complex and all subsequent modifications due to, which were granted subject to the incorporation of all the original conditions of approval imposed in the original permit issued on May twenty-seventh, two thousand and four, the properties located Meeting House Road in the B1 zoning district. So what the Board did, this is the public hearing notice, at the last, when the public hearing was opened in November, I believe, the Board discussed some options, talked to, or listened to presentations from both the property owner and the condominium residents association. And what issue, what it issue is, is condition nineteen of the original special permit, which says that no occupancy permit for a unit in any building shall be issued until one, the basin binder course for the entire roadway driveway shown on the plans has been installed, except that the final four occupancy units shall not be issued unless and until the final top coat of paving has been completed, and then goes on a bit for other things. The question that has vexed the Board for some time now is the installation of the final top coat. That has not been done, and they're also, based on the information that I believe that is in the Board's record, from the town's engineer that, and, and others, that the various, that some of the various infrastructure parts of the, related to the paving, for example sidewalks and curbing, and some, perhaps some drainage, have deteriorated because they haven't, the top, final top coat, the final finish hasn't been done, and all of the units in the original, well, the, basically that have been completed have been completed, and it's, the road has been used by residents and everybody else, and, without the final top coat for quite a few years. The question that has been at issue is what does final four occupancy permits mean? The occupancy permits were issued for all of the currently completed units. There was a final phase that I don't believe has been, a building permit has been issued yet. I don't think, and I don't believe that the full completed building permit application has been provided to the building commissioner. That would develop an additional, I believe it's sixteen units. And those are to be, you know, are still somewhat out there in the future as to when they may even be started, and meanwhile, the road is deteriorating. So the problem that the Board faced was how to deal with this question of what does the final four occupancy permits mean, when does paving have to be completed, and whether or not the original permit should be either modified or clarified based on what the Board thinks the original, the, the final four occupancy permits, final units means. There also, as I know, the Board is aware, and the residents, condominium association, and the owner, developer have made the Board aware, there was litigation between those private parties, the Board, the town was not a party to that. There was a settlement of, that, I believe there were two cases, there was land court case and superior court case, they were resolved by the private parties on terms that do relate to some obligations that they are undertaking as between themselves regarding some of the infrastructure at this, at this development. But the Board was not a party, the town was not a party to either the litigation or to the settlement, and in my opinion, the, the developer is subject to the conditions of the permit unless they are modified in some way by the Board, and as of now, they haven't been. So I think that's sort of the whole range of issues that are before you, and the, the public hearing notice is to address whether or not there should be an amendment or modification to condition nineteen, which is the one that addresses paving to perhaps clarify or to modify given circumstances that have occurred over the last several years. The, the main part of the development is completed, occupied, I don't know whether it's a hundred percent occupied, at this point there might be one or two vacant units. The people who are familiar, more familiar with the property would know that, but in a sense, in essence, it has been completed, except for, I mean, there's some other minor issues, but that's not what we're here for, the, the paving of the main, the main Meeting House Road part of the act, which is the main access to the development.
Okay, good, thank you, Pat. Do any members of the Board have questions for Pat?
I have a couple of questions. One of them is, so what remains then is everything except what these parties have negotiated in terms of settlement? So, so in other words, there was, they're supposed to pave everything, now they're gonna pave everything but what was already settled?
Well, what they're gonna, you're gonna have to ask them what they're gonna pave, what they've agreed to, because that doesn't involve us.
Okay, so we don't know what the net is then, in terms of, of what remains to be paved by the developer?
Um, I, no, not directly, but my understanding is that it's the main part of Meeting House Road.
Okay.
And the adjacent, you know, the curbing and some of the, and some of the sidewalks along there.
And then my other question is?
And not the inter, not the driveways that lead to the individual units, that that's not the issue.
Okay, so being that is sort of more of a physical question, then the, then the other question I would have pertains to the four last units, and what do we do about that?
That is your, that is, that's the question for the Board.
So can, can the Board unilaterally change a provision in this permit?
Okay. I don't think you can unila, unilaterally, I wouldn't use that word, I think that after a hearing and consideration of evidence, you could make findings that would justify a modification. Now, the developer's attorney, who I believe is here, had argued that the, or doesn't have jurisdiction to do that, but basically once this is done, it's done, any appeal period to appeal any, appeal any conditions has long since run, and that there's no authority under, I think I'm paraphrasing or summarizing, under the Housing Appeals Committee Regulations or state law that would authorize the Board to do anything at this late date. I think that there's general authority when the circumstances have changed, after the Board has a hearing, if it makes some, you know, factual findings, could support a, an amendment or modification or a clarification. That's not to say that I don't think that will be challenged by the developer, I mean, one would hope not, I mean, I mean, the other thing is that if people are here, and we've tried to, over, you know, the year or so or something, that this has been under discussion in various contexts, I mean, perhaps there is a, there have been some developments, to use the same word, recently, since the Board heard what happened in November, since the Board heard the first session of the public hearing in November, or that there's something that's anticipated to be happening, I don't know, I have had no contact with either the residents association, their attorney, or the developer since the last session of the public hearing, but if, I mean, certainly wouldn't foreclose a discussion with the developer's attorney as to what options there might be, I mean, obviously it is the middle of January, nobody's gonna go out and pave in, you know, twenty-degree weather, but, you know, what are we looking at coming, you know, the upcoming paving season, or what are we coming, looking at in terms of the potential development of these additional sixteen units? And sort of where is that, and how does that fit in? And the Board may wanna hear from the developer's attorney and the residents representatives on that, I mean, I think that would be helpful. And perhaps to engage in a discussion that could result in a resolution that would not go down, that would come up with a condition or modification that would be acceptable to everyone, and obviously avoid the expense and the uncertainty of litigation.
Okay.
All right, well, then let's, let's move forward. Pat, do you, any, first of all, any other questions from Boyer or Mr. Pat? Would it be appropriate for Mr. Conley to give him an opportunity to make a few statements at this point?
I think so, yeah.
Mr. Conley, if, welcome.
Okay, I had said in the record before our position with respect to the lack of authority to modify the permit after it's become a final permit, which is to respond to, we stand on that tonight. But with respect to Ms. Cantor's question, our intention is to file plans with the Building Department for the remaining sixteen units, and to complete those units in the final paving of Meeting House Road that would be required under the permit as part of that.
Mr. Conley, is there a, a date that the developer has in mind for filing the plans for the final sixteen units?
We're hoping to do it this spring.
Hoping to file this spring, or hoping to start work this spring?
Well, certainly file, and then, depending if the filing's successful, start work.
Okay, questions from the Board, from Mr. Conley? Okay. Ray, any, would you like to ask any questions of the Board, or have any input?
Just, I guess, two comments, one to Ms. Luciano's question, the agreement which, I actually have copies of those pages of it here for, for the benefit of the, of the Board, the agreement which was reached with the developer specifically excludes any infrastructure that's required to complete the inner roadways and the driveways, and specifically identifies the fact that it would exclude any requirements that the town would have on the developer. So at the time of that settlement, all that the owners were accepting as part of that settlement was to put the final top coat on the, on the inner roadways that we, we own and the driveways. We knew from the building inspector, Building Commissioner, that there were some requirements that he had outstanding relative to the roadways for a repair and infrastructure standpoint, and we received confirmation of that when we put out the request for bids for the paving of those particular areas. We were told at that point in time by the successful bidder that there was a significant amount of infrastructure that had to be completed before the final coat could be put on, and primarily because the time from the initial base coat to now was so long that the roadway had deteriorated to the point where so much of this work was required. As to the issue of the last four units, the permit that was issued at that point in time was a permit that went up to forty-four units. It was also the number of units that the land court had approved at that point in time. So when that comprehensive permit with some of its amendments had included in it that the paving would be completed with the specific occupancy of the last four units, it, it's only included and specifically identified forty-four units. It was later on when the developer sought approval for additional units that he argued, well, I haven't completed all the units yet, but that wasn't part of the permit that had been issued that called for the completion of the paving with the last four units, which basically would have been units forty-one through forty-four.
There were forty-four units in the first phase?
There were forty-four units in this, there were several phases that were used in building this.
Okay.
But the, your permit authorized, and the land court authorized forty-four units.
And all forty-four units have been completed?
Yes, they have.
Ray, was there a timeframe put on the, on the infrastructure being done to the driveways and to the internal roads in your agreement? and to the internal roads in your agreement?
In the agreements with unit owners, and specifically stated by Mr. Birelli, two unit owners, right up until the last units that were completed, or sold, rather, that he said the paving would be completed shortly, as soon as the last four units that were built would be approved. So he told basically the new owners that we would have all the paving completed, and that never happened.
No, with regard to your agreement, where you're going to do the top coat, the final top coat, of the internal paved roads?
That's correct.
The infrastructure that's part of those roads, is there any, that the NCI is still responsible for? Do they have a timeframe? Did you guys settle on a timeframe for that to be done in your agreement with them?
We did not, primarily because the specifics as to what needed to be done hadn't been communicated directly, my understanding was, from the building commissioner to the developer. So we weren't aware of what that, we were assuming we might be able to have the final paving done before the cold weather came in this year, when we had asked the developer to complete the infrastructure that was required, the developer indicated that was not his responsibility.
All right, so the agreement that you have in place, the bottom line is, the infrastructure needs far exceed what you settled for.
No infrastructure was part of what we included in our settlement, only the top coat.
Why didn't you include the infrastructure?
Because we wanted the final coat done. We knew there were open issues with the building commissioner, which we didn't have all the specifics to, that needed to be completed, not only for the inner roadways and driveway, but also for main Meeting House Road. So not knowing what the extent of that was, there was no way we could even have included that in a settlement discussion, because we didn't have all of those requirements. So the simplest way was to exclude infrastructure improvements or corrections from the agreement, as well as anything that the town, this particular board, would decide would need to be done.
Here we have two of nine pages.
Yes.
Is there anything in these nine pages that would relieve the developer of having to address the infrastructure issues?
No. In fact, a complete copy of that, I think, has been previously provided to the board. That's why I only included those two here, but this is the only area that speaks to paving the infrastructure issues surrounding.
So the bottom line is, you're asking this board to, I mean, our focus right along has been Meeting House Road and getting that done. You're also asking us to overlay the infrastructure for the internal road system.
Basically asking you to enforce what was included in your permit relative to the inner roadways and driveways requirement that the permit stated specifically.
All right, Pat, here's the $64,000 legal question.
A little more than $64,000.
Can I put that on the bill?
Yeah, put that on the bill. I mean, they've got a private agreement that we were not privy to. What's our responsibility?
Okay, well, that's actually a relatively easy question, which is, we have no responsibility to that. That's a private agreement to settle lawsuit between two private parties. The conditions of the permit are the conditions that the board has control over, not a private agreement. I mean, if by some chance, you know, okay, if it gets paved or work gets done pursuant to that private agreement, and the parties are happy and the board is happy, I guess that's fine. But in terms of the board's responsibilities and the developer's responsibilities, they are governed by the conditions in the comprehensive permit.
To play devil's advocate, it sounds like Ray is saying that it's this board's responsibility to make sure the infrastructure gets done, even though that was excluded from their agreement.
Okay.
Does that, just help me out with that?
Right. The board's responsibility, I would say, and it says amendment modification, I think it also could say clarification, but I think, you know, an amendment or a modification is greater than a clarification, so clarification could be subsumed within an amendment or a modification of the condition. What's before the board now is the schedule of paving under Condition 19B. So if there's a problem with, which is the top coat, if there's a problem with other conditions in the development that have not been consistent with the terms of the permit, then I think that's a somewhat separate issue.
Okay.
But as a practical matter, I mean, it's all, you know, you really can't separate it entirely, because as a practical matter, you're not going to put, you know, beautiful new top coat on crumbling, I mean, I don't know very much about road construction, but the little I know is, you're not going to put a beautiful, nice new top coat on top of crumbling...
Poor foundation.
Yeah, and with, you know, with curbs that are like listing, because they're, you know, they haven't been supported, whatever it is, over time, the top coat hasn't been there. So, you know, as a practical matter, that is something that I think the board can consider, but what's narrowly before the board is the paving issue. But I think a subsidiary issue is, in order to do the paving, they may need to do some other work, or someone may need to do some other work.
And under the permit, does that, or does that not still include the infrastructure in the back roads?
Yes, it would. That's all part, yeah, that's all part of the permit.
As well as the individual driveways.
Yeah, I mean...
If there's infrastructure associated with it.
Yeah, yeah, sure, because that's part of the original approval.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
With the amendment to the comprehensive permit, when it went from, was it 44 to 64? Am I right?
Forty-four plus 16.
The last 16 units, yes.
Yeah, so whatever, okay, 44 to 60. Okay, with that amendment, did that then, in effect, supersede the requirement of the last four units and move the last four units out to that amended units? Or did the original comprehensive permit for 44 still remain in effect?
That's my $64,000 question, because that's what the developers say, is that by subsequently amending the permit on various occasions, not changing that original condition, increasing the units, that the four means the last, whenever the last four are, not the original last four, but whenever then the last four of that new 16-unit piece. And that's for the board to decide. I mean, you know, as an institution, not necessarily the people here individually, but, you know, what was intended here, and what was intended when it was originally, the condition was originally posed, what was intended then with the subsequent amendments, and what does it mean now?
Is there legal precedent for things just to continue on? In other words, is there any timeframe from a precedent perspective?
No, I mean, no. I mean, there are many sort of developments that, over time, you know, start off small and change over time, and, you know, I mean, it's not that unusual. I mean, it's unusual, in my experience, for it to be 10 years and so many, you know, so many changes without a new permit, but it's not unheard of.
All right, Pat, is it your advice to us that we take this in two bites? The original, I mean, we originally talked about modifying Condition 19B, which would be Meeting House Road and the infrastructure that pertains to Meeting House Road. Our initial goal was to, since it was unavailable to this board, when the final 16 units would be started, we felt there are significant safety hazards, we don't know how long the developer is going to wait, Mr. Conley said the spring, you know, we don't know for a fact if that's going to happen. So the 19B, that was our original intent, was to deal with Meeting House Road, the infrastructure and the paving of that. Do you recommend that we deal with that tonight and then make the internal infrastructure a separate issue, or is it all commingled and together?
Well, I think it would be reasonable for the board to do either, and that's, you know, it really is, it's not a legal call that I can make. I mean, I think they are tied in together. On the other hand, we are specifically talking about 19 and paving, but, you know, 19, anyway, talks about binding, of course, for the entire roadways, driveways shown on the plan, so that does include the driveways, you know, the interior driveways. And I don't know whether that's actually been done or not at this point. I mean, another option might be to see, I mean, to recognize or make bindings as to the current conditions and the safety hazards and the time that has gone on, and to maybe set a date in relation to and with the condition of the developer actually submitting the plans and commencing construction within a particular time period, and then the final paving to come, you know, at a reasonable time after that, before presumably the next winter season comes along. That's, you know, another way of doing it. And I think that clarification, you know, would be clarifying this condition as to what it was, what it means.
So what you're saying is that, I mean, you know, I'm a little slow sometimes, so your recommendation would be that we modify 19 with a specific date of commencement of the next phase of the development?
I mean, I think that could be reasonable.
And their pushback would be, you know, we're going to start when we want to start it, right?
Their pushback would be, you have no jurisdiction.
Yeah.
Yeah, you have no jurisdiction to force us to do this.
Plus the negotiation.
But don't we, since we've had 19 modifications, or we have all these modifications, I know I heard the attorney say, "That's the final modification." Well, wait a minute, if that's the final modification, what about the other 18 that we had before this? When is the final modification? Since they made 19 of them, why can't we do another one?
Well...
What's the reason why we can't modify it?
Narrow reason is that the Housing Appeals Committee, well, first of all, those other modifications were all initiated by the developer. And there is some provisions in the Housing Appeals Committee Regulations that allows modifications by the developer. They're silent on modifications by the board. But I, you know, and that's the risk that the board takes, you know, that we're being upfront with you, I'm being upfront with you about. I think that, you know, there's general authority that, over time, if circumstances change, for the board to clarify, modify a condition, but I can't tell you that that's necessarily, you know, that that's, as they say, a slam dunk argument. I mean, I think it's a reasonable argument. I think that, given the facts of this case, it's reasonable, but, you know, how a judge might ultimately rule, you know, and I think that to the extent that there is any ability to try to work something out in terms of a schedule, that would be acceptable to the board and to the developer and presumably to the residents, that would be ideal. I don't know that that's possible, but that would be what I would hope for.
And wouldn't it be reasonable that if the agreement reached between the trustees and the developer clearly says that the plaintiffs are not under any obligation to infrastructure work, that the infrastructure work still falls at the peril of the developer?
Well, I would say...
Since it doesn't say that they were going to do it, isn't it still his responsibility under the comprehensive permit to do that?
Well, I would say, not because of any agreement and that language, but because of what the permit says. And as, I think, you know, as I tried to say, is that that agreement is just between the private parties. It doesn't relieve the developer of any obligations under the permit. So whatever they've agreed to is essentially not relevant to what I think the board has to consider. And so, you know, I mean, I know that everybody's caught up in it, and we all know about it, and we all talked about it, but it really, it doesn't matter. We have to go by what's in the permit, and then what actually gets done on the ground.
Okay. Thank you.
Pat, I keep coming back to this. I'm having a hard time with the internal structure and the private agreement. If they entered into a private agreement with Mr. Birelli, and he is, they allocated a certain X number of dollars to the paving, why wasn't the infrastructure addressed as part of the private agreement?
I have no idea.
That was their negotiation.
Yeah, I mean, there were, I mean...
I think a big question would be, is, could the trustees have negotiated this when the sort of, the jurisdiction of all of this still resided under the special permit? So they negotiated something out from under the special permit, if you will?
I would say they negotiated a side agreement independently of the comprehensive permit, and, you know, if the work gets done and nobody, you know, looks too closely, do we care? Probably not. But in terms of what the continuing obligations of the developer are, unless and until the conditions in the permit are changed, the developer is responsible.
I mean, their agreement doesn't mitigate the obligation of the developer with respect to infrastructure, paving, driveways.
Exactly, exactly, exactly.
It does relieve them of the driveways, but it doesn't relieve them of infrastructure. He does not have to put a final top coat on the driveways. They're going to do that themselves, as well as their internal roads.
But that's a private agreement between them.
Right, right.
Under Condition 19, unless and until that's changed, and maybe you want to, I mean, that's another thing which, you know, we hadn't, it just occurred to me, I'm talking off the top of my head, is probably a lawyer shouldn't do, but, you know, maybe that is something in terms of modification of paving, you would want to consider. I mean, I would have to think a little bit more about, and we should talk about, whether or not, you know, in light of the agreement, maybe there should be a modification that the developer is not responsible for the final top coat of the internal driveways, but is responsible for infrastructure and everything else. I mean, that's another process, I mean, the board, I guess, could consider that, but unless and until, as I said, the board does make a modification, that private agreement is just simply a private agreement, and the comprehensive permit comes in.
Did you folks receive $200,000?
We received $200,000, we received $200,000 of approximately $400,000 we were seeking for various damages and whatnot. As part of the settlement, what we were attempting to do relative to the paving was to get the paving done. That was our primary objective. The developer insisted that we, as part of the amount that we would receive, that we would do the final coat, and he would not move from that position. We didn't go into the process looking to do any paving, but in order to reach an agreement and get this somewhat done, it was our expectation that the infrastructure work would be done by the developer, and we would do the final paving. His argument was, he didn't want the owners coming back to him for any criticism of the final pavement, so that's why he wanted us to do the final pavement.
What happened to that $200,000?
$200,000, a good portion of it has been used to repair leaking roofs in the facilities, and a portion of it is being held for doing some of this work, if necessary. We have offered, by the way, to return that percentage of the settlement to the developer, you know, to include that in the total paving that he would have to do, and we basically were turned down. Just one question, though, and it relates to Mr. Hanson's question. My understanding is, there is no permit for the 16 units. That permit was withdrawn, so the only permit that exists, legal permit that exists, is for the 44 units. So there's nothing beyond those 44 units and that requirement, that paving be done, because the building commissioner advised us that that permit was pulled. There is no approved permit for any additional units beyond the 44.
Okay. I'm looking for some, yes, sir. Please identify yourself.
Yes, I'm Gil Axberg. I'm on the Board of Trustees, but also a resident, and I was one of the last four to purchase units in this 44-unit subdivision. When I purchased the unit, I specifically talked to Matt Birelli in my driveway that I was buying, and asked him when he was going to pave the driveway with the finished coat, because it's a... because it's a two-by-four in front of my garage door that was never removed or paving put up to, and when he was going to pave the final internal structure of the road. This was in August 2010 when I bought it. At that time, he said he would have it done before winter of 2010. Now, I paid good money, and so did everybody else up there, to have a proper driveway and to have roads done. He got his money, they got their money. We gave it to them in good faith. We didn't hold anything back. And I don't understand how this board can let them not pave the roads that they have an obligation to pave and the driveways. I have been up with a contractor and looked at the present condition of the sub-pavement. It is all deteriorating, all around the manholes, all around the catch basins. It's sinking, it's cracking. And he says, "The reason that this is done is because it has been delayed for the final coat." That's not us residents' problem. We paid our bill. We paid for the units which included driveways and the internal roads. We're coming to the town of Norfolk to help us get what we paid for. We're paying taxes every year, the same as everybody else in town. And we aren't getting a fair shake, as far as I'm concerned, and as far as the other residents of our subdivision, or our association are concerned. I would like you to take that into consideration when you make these decisions as to where you stand with the paving of the internal roads. We paid for them. We didn't get them. It's not our fault. You guys didn't hold a bond. I mean, every other place I've talked to that, putting in subdivisions, they have to hold a bond. The builder is responsible by bonding. This was not done. As buyers, we didn't know this. All we could do is, is listen to what he said, ask him questions, and he told us that he was going to do it. Another thing that he said he was going to do, I live across the street from the water treatment leach field, and he said he was going to landscape that and have a walking track around the top of that leach field. Nothing has been happened, nothing at all. It's a mess. We have to mow it, but that's about it. So he has not lived up to his obligation, which we as owners paid for. Thank you.
Okay. Well, let's, unless there are any other questions, here's a recommendation that I want to throw out to the board. Pat, how would we move forward at this point to modify this amendment to the comprehensive permit nineteen A and B? We want to modify the amendment in the original comprehensive permit to include infrastructure and top coat paving for Meeting House Road, and infrastructure only for the internal roads and driveways. How would we craft, how would we write that up, either in the amendment form? How would we, how would we make that vehicle work?
Also, Mike, also, just, just one of the things is that, do we have a confirmation or a clarification on the status of the sixteen units? Was that permit pulled? And if so, does the original, do we revert back to the original forty-four as the standard for the last four units to be completed?
I, I don't know. I don't know whether, I mean, perhaps Mr. Connolly does. I don't know.
The comprehensive permit stands, if there was a building permit that was applied for, a building permit, not the comprehensive permit, that was withdrawn.
Okay. So, so the comprehensive permit was modified to add sixteen units? That stands?
Right.
I think the goal, and correct me if anyone feels differently, is to start this process.
Yeah.
You know, is anyone uncomfortable with that?
No, I agree. How do we make sure that the, that it's met, though, in terms of the infrastructure being completed? We'll make sure that when it's finally met, ready for the top coat that they have to put on themselves, what's going to hold, or what's going to be the measure by which that means that it's been met?
That it's ready?
Right. Who's going to make that determination?
The town engineer?
Within the, within the amendment that we, like, the amendment's made, right, then there'll, there'll be some sort of inspection.
Yeah. Why don't we, for the, you know, we've got a pretty full agenda tonight. Can, can you work on this for us over the next few days, and then, well...
What I'd recommend...
What do you think we should do?
Okay, what I'd recommend is that the board make some findings. If the sense of the board, I think you should take a sense of the board as, and, and my sense of that is that you do want to do something to modify or clarify the condition that would make it apply to the existing forty-four units, not the additional sixteen, include the infrastructure and Meeting House Road, and perhaps refer to the agreement, because there is an agreement between the developer and the residents on the final top coat of the, to incorporate that into. So I, I mean, if that's sort of the, if I've sort of generally summarized where you are, I can, I could prepare some sort of more formal findings. If board members individually would send me some, you know, thoughts, don't send it to each other, I can put something together for your next meeting. I would not, I would either do it as a draft decision or a memorandum, and then you would discuss it in the next, in the next meeting, but obviously not among yourselves before.
Okay.
So unless there's some, something else. But you just want to be careful about not communicating outside of the open meeting. But I'd, I'd like for, perhaps the chair to sort of give me a little bit, when anybody else, a little bit more direction now, and if there's anything else. And then I would continue it to your next, when is your next meeting?
March fifth.
March fifth.
So we'll, we'll continue the public hearing, basically. We'll keep it open at this time, the public hearing.
Those individual inputs could be emailed to you?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Is everyone clear on that? Comfortable? If you want to, if any findings and facts individually, email those to Pat. She'll include that in her, her memorandum to the board. And then at our next meeting, we'll make a formal motion to start the process to amend the comprehensive permit. All right. Do we need, Maria or Pat, do we need any sort of a formal motion to start this, for what Pat's going to work on? Do we need to...
I think we make a motion to continue.
Yeah.
Too much.
Okay.
Out of time, sir.
Okay.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing with regard to Norfolk Town Center Condition Modification Nineteen A and B, to March fifth, it's at eight fifteen.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are you going to stick around?
Um, do you want me to? Okay.
We've got some other, a couple of other things coming up.
Sure. I'm here.
Since you're here.
Since I'm here, right, of course.
Since you're here, Pat.
But, okay. I don't have the agenda, but...
Maria, do you have an agenda for?
Here's one right here.
Yeah, why don't you give Pat the whole package?
Give this whole package.
Crazy.
Pat, here's the only package up tonight.
Oh, this is it?
Everything.
Okay. Now, Woo-Roo Realty Trust, this is the one that you were working on?
No.
Oh, yeah. Who worked on Woo-Roo?
I talked to, I talked to Tim Martin on Woo-Roo.
You talked, okay.
Yeah, we just talked. He wants to present his, even though there's, we're not going to make a, we're not going to make a decision, he would like to pronounce the history of thirty-five Rockwood Road, and he wants to compel us to get the zoning agent to state that it is a four-family house. And as we know, right now, we don't have any zoning laws with regard to four-family homes.
Oh, okay.
And the building inspector has said that he will, unless they can provide something legally, he will not rule that it's a four-family. Because there, he has to have something legally showing that it was a four-family prior to zoning.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. That's good, that's good.
You better be as good on Cooney Realty Trust over there.
All right. It is now eight thirty.
We're behind schedule.
Chris, if you could...
Yep. Open the public hearing.
Open the public hearing, please.
Is everybody ready yet?
All right.
Yeah, wait for Maria.
In a second.
Actually, we're doing this on...
All right, Maria.
So you're Cooney?
Yeah.
Yes, it is. I also blessed.
Can you have one you were going to speak into?
Yeah, it's coming up.
Okay, so it's an APL, right? Yeah, it's an APL.
Ready?
Sure.
Maria? I'd like to open a public hearing to discuss the appeal by Woo-Roo Realty Trust with regard to thirty-five Rockwood Road. Mr. Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board members. Timothy Martin, on behalf of Woo-Roo Realty Trust, I've got a handout here. The photo on the front of the book I'm going to hand out, this is the building at thirty-five Rockwood Road. Rockwood Road is Route 115. This is right across from the Grange.
Thank you.
Like, you know, this, audio or video tape?
Okay. I'll do my best. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I should probably have one.
Chairman, I'm just, okay, with the board, if I can present maybe from this corner.
Sure, be my guest, absolutely.
And I'm here this evening to ask that you find that thirty-five Rockwood Road is a pre, is a legal, pre-existing four-family. And what I want to do this evening is walk you through a historical timeline of the building, and also through the documentation to support that, that it is a legal, pre-existing four-family. Do you hear the other board members?
Hello?
Everything I present up here this evening is in your books, and I'll show you how to follow along with me, other than one short video presentation, which is obviously not in the book. I'll just hold this. But quite simply, this is just a visual of the chain of title to the property of thirty-five Rockwood Road, starting with the most recent back to nineteen twenty. In two thousand nine, title was conveyed to Woo-Roo Realty Trust, nineteen seventy-three into Dominic and Ruth Giampa, nineteen seventy-one, Vito Juisti, Eleanor Juisti, George Juisti. Sherwood Realty Trust, also part of the Juisti family. And I'm going to jump back to nineteen twenty, where title went into the Fishers, and then it came through a couple of probates into their estate, and then out to the Juistis. You don't have to memorize any of this. This is just for when I walk through the history. Some of these names will be familiar, and you'll get a sense of it. And it's in the book, too. Okay. There, there was a couple of issues when we met with the building department, and this started back in two thousand nine. There was, there was a note in the file that indicated that the property was not a four-family. Subsequent to that, more recent history, there were three or four subsequent letters from the building commissioner indicating that he still stood by that position in two thousand nine, and that's why we're here today. Those letters are in your, in your binder on the left-hand side, and I won't spend a lot, and it's, the important parts are highlighted. Unfortunately, it was that first page, kind of the handwritten note that started all this long-going-out process. But I won't go too much into that, because we are here on an appeal this evening. One of the, the building commissioner brought up three, three items that he, that troubled him, brought to him, too, finding that this building is a legal, pre-existing four-family. He indicated that the, that it never said that in the deed, that was the first one. Secondly, he said that the assessors office didn't assess it that way. And finally, he indicated that there just wasn't enough information in his file or presented to him to find, to make that finding. So I'm going to address all those as we go through this. And the way, the way this, the way this works, this is not, this is not the DNA code, but this is really just a timeline. Two thousand fourteen on the right, back through history, back to eighteen seventy-five. So hopefully, in about ten or fifteen minutes, I'm going to walk you through a hundred and forty years of history and not confuse you, or not confuse myself on it. But the first thing, and these all correlate to the tabs in your book. So when I start here, you probably can't see number one up here. This is in your book. If you, if you turn to page, if you turn to tab one, that will correspond to what's here and so forth. So there's thirty or twenty-nine items. They're all tabbed appropriately, so you can follow right along and refer to them further on during your deliberations. So the first one is just a letter from Attorney Richard Kennedy, who's an assistant registrar of probate. And in that letter, quite simply, he says, to simplify, he says, "The registry of deeds records deeds. Deeds don't determine use." So that, that kind of addressed the building commissioner's opinion about finding the use in the deed. You won't find it in the deed. Typically, you never will. Counsel may agree with me, back in Suffolk County, you may find some older deeds back in the eighteen hundreds, a lot of them about restrictions of what you can't do. You, you can only use it for church purposes and things like that. Typically, deeds do not convey use, they're not for that purpose. They convey title. The second tab is just for, just so you get a visual, just a plot plan. It shows the building in correlation to the sidelines. I'm sure you've driven by the building many times. It's on one fifteen, right across from the Grange. The, the third tab gets into what's kind of the townhouse on this property. This, this building was looked at to be considered to be added to the National Register of Historic Places. And the reason I put this in here is, is that everything that's been done with this building over the hundred and forty-year history has been all above board, all with open book, and the town has been well aware of it. There's, there's been nothing done under the cover of darkness relative to the use or permits or anything like that. And I'll, and I'll show you all of that. So when you look at the tabs for the historic use, I think the third page, I highlighted one simple thing, and that just shows that the, the group that researched this building just, just opined that this building was built in the late eighteen hundreds. And that's really, and they talked about the condition of the building and things like that. And that's why I put it in there, that that's an independent support for when the building was erected. This is all important, because I have to demonstrate to you that the building was obviously built before zoning, but also used as a four-family prior to zoning. And that's where I'm, where I'm taking you with all of this. So when you look at the visual up here, the items we're going to get into next are all testimony and firsthand accounts from people who have actually lived at that building. And that's above the line. Below the line, and I'll get there in a few minutes, is all public record, permits, things that are available to any, any person in the public relative to the use of that building on a, on a historical basis. And again, it all's going to flow from two thousand fourteen back. So I'm going to continue above the line, so to speak, and get into the actual testimony or the statements from people who either lived there or have lived there, and then, and what their account of the use of the building is. On tab four, we have a letter from Grace LaPala. Grace is a current tenant of, of the building, and she writes in her copy of the email that she's been there twenty years, and during her tenure, the building has been used continuously as a four-family. So that gets us back in time quite a bit from, from, from nineteen, she's been there since nineteen ninety-three, back to nineteen seventy-three, if, if you want to believe her, her opinion. The next tab, tab five, is from Lisa Northill. And Lisa Northill is the daughter of Mr. Giampa. And you remember in that chain of title, Giampa was one of the names I showed you. And Lisa writes, "To whom it may concern, I can verify that thirty-five Rockwood Road has been a four-family since my parents, Dominic and Ruth Giampa, purchased the property in May of nineteen... of 1973. When I lived there from September 1983 through June 1986, it was a four-family. And when my father sold it in June 2009 to Woo Woo Realty Trust, it was still a four-family. My brother Mark of Rentham will also confirm that the property has always been a four-family." So more on the timeline going back. Next, I have a letter from Cronin Oil and Sons, and that's tab six. And that indicates, it's a short, it's a short copy of a letter, and you notice I've dated, I've highlighted the date of the letter. The date that this was written was January of 2009. That was when Woo Woo Realty Trust did their due diligence on this property, because they had the same issue at that time. And that was part of the due diligence at that time, when they discovered that, in their opinion, based on everything they could research, that it was a four-family. Mr. Bullock's determination was subsequent to that. So it was after the due diligence of the buyer, and that's why the sale went through. But you'll see in the letter from 2009, from Mike Cronin of Cronin Oil, "We have been providing oil and burner service to your tenants at 35 Rockwood Road for over 39 years." Again, that was written in 2009. "The building has four separate heating systems, and has always been a four-unit building for at least the last 30 years." Okay? Moving on, we come to tab number seven, Ann Marie Mackey Johnson. Ann Marie passed away, so this is the only evidence we can get from her, obviously, but she wrote a letter several years ago, addressed to Mary Ellen, who's a trustee of Woo Woo Realty Trust. And again, this went towards the Woo Woo Realty Trust doing their due diligence on the use of the property. And it states, "I lived at 35 Rockwood Road Norfolk in 1968. Also at that address was Steve and Janet Foster, downstairs, back apartment. The front apartment was patent David Lukens. The second floor was a couple whose name I don't remember, they now live in Franklin." You can check with George and Shirley Cronin of Cronin Oil, who we just got a letter from. "They delivered oil to the house. The gas company, Bruce Home Gas, is no longer in business. Other people you may check in with are such-and-such. Good luck, Ann Marie Jackson." So we have a letter from her, that she lived there in 1968. In a few minutes, in my presentation, one of the questions, it's not critical for tonight, but one of the things I'm going to bring up to the board, it's kind of an interesting thing, I thought, but, is what year are we working under, under zoning? I'm going to opine that 1968's the year. Other folks are going to opine that it's 1953. It's going to be irrelevant to your decision whether it's 1968 or 1953. So I'm going to demonstrate prior to 1953, that it was a four-family. So I'm not asking you to make that determination. If you want to, you can. You may want to clarify that for the public on what zoning bylaw we are operating under, and I'll get to that in a few minutes. But I don't need that determination for what I'm asking. Going on further, tab number nine. Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped what? I skipped number eight. George Juasty, how could I leave him out? "I, George Juasty, used to deliver oil from 1962 to 1973 to 35 Rockwood Road Norfolk. At that time, it was not a single family, it was a multi-family, signed George Juasty." And George Juasty is now looking at the family business and sharing distinct defenses, so we just included that for reference to where they are today. And then tab number nine, the letter on tab number nine, it's a little bit lengthy, it's quite a nice letter about good times there at 35 Rockwood Road, but I won't read all of it. It's from Joan Oblinski-Colligan, and this letter was written in the fall of 2013. And Joan lives out in Franklin today. I've been able to find her and speak to her. And what I've highlighted out of the letter is what I think is the important part. It says, "From the time I remember, the house was always four apartments. I was born in 1949," is Joan Obliginsky. I apologize on her name. And then at the bottom, I highlight, "When it was sold, the house had four apartments in it. I believe they sold it to someone by the name of Juasty as an apartment building." So again, I'm tying all of this together. Now, while Joan was born in 1949, she did move into the building at a later date, but her grandparents were the Fishers. And remember that chart I showed you early on? The Fishers took title in 1920. She used to visit them as a very young girl. And she was born in 1949, and that's what her memory recalls. Tab number 11, if we could get this to work, I think it's quite compelling, and this is the video that I refer to. You're going to hear from, hopefully, it's a short video. It's from Evelyn Redell Preston. Now Evelyn Redell Preston is the daughter of one of the Fishers, but the videos speak for itself.
Evelyn Redell is Dorothy Redell's sister, and Dorothy Redell is Joan Obluchewski's, Dorothy Redell is Joan Colligan, you know, Obluchewski's daughter. So it goes, it goes, what happened was Mary Fisher...
It's good to have you titled examining.
I know, I'm sorry. What happened was Mary Fisher and George Fisher bought the property, they had a son, William Fisher. William Fisher married Dorothy, and they moved up to Bar Harbor, Maine. I'm sorry. Let me just say...
Wait, 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 we'll just play the video.
No, let me just, I have to clarify it, though. So Mary Fisher and George Fisher had a son, Walter. Walter married Dorothy Redell. Walter was killed, he was a merchant marine, he was killed off of Florida, he was bombed by the Germans, and he died. Mary Fisher and George Fishers, Dorothy Redell, Dorothy Fisher, she got remarried. The Fishers had no other children. So Mary Fisher, Dorothy Redell Obluchewski, she got married, they moved in. So that's how, I know it's a little bit confusing, do you follow it?
It's very, let's just move on to the video.
All right. Sorry. I want you to...
Don, there will be a quiz after this on Mrs. Fisher and when she lived in the house, and who she was married to.
All right, you ready? Sorry, it's very confusing, but it's... Hold on, I have to... Sorry. Okay, yes, she is. She's as cute as a button toe. Okay. Start it from the back.
Don't sabotage it now, Bob. You realize you have to give us your iPad, because that becomes evidence.
She was born in 1949. Now, this apartment was divided then in 47, I pretty told you 47, because she took the other half that I did not use.
Okay.
It was down the front part of the, upstairs.
Yeah.
And she made an apartment with the kitchen, the bathroom, the bedroom.
Who's she?
Dorothy.
Oh, Dorothy did it? Okay, so it went from Mary Fisher, Mary and George Fisher, and they had a son, Walter. Well, they had a son.
Got Walter and died in the war in Florida. Yeah. And then Dorothy went in and lived alone, first part of the house, to take care of Mrs. Fisher. She was in the rental home, which is one of the...
You can hear it. You can hear it.
Baby over there, her name is Dorothy. Hey, she called us.
Yes. Okay.
Her mother ran a nursing home in Norfolk, and Mrs. Fisher got birthed bad, and she went up to the nursing home for a while to live.
Yeah.
Because she had, she was a three-year-old. So my sister moved into the front apartment.
Dorothy. Yeah. Okay, so when, so, but you were telling me that, so it was originally a two-family.
Yeah, originally two, then it went to three.
And what, and then it went to three, in what year?
I think it was around 46 or 45.
Okay, and do you know why it went to a three?
Yeah, because my sister Walter lived there.
Sister Dorothy. Okay. And then how did it, then what happened?
Then, uh, they bought them, and they moved out.
Who's "they"? The Fishers?
Dorothy moved out, and Walter moved in.
Okay.
And then they divided, my sister Dorothy divided the bottom apartment, built on an extra bedroom for my parents.
Okay, and that's a little one-story? Okay.
And so they had four apartments, which are legal.
Okay, and what year was that?
Is she leading the witness, Bob? As a lawyer, we do clarify this.
What did she say? Around 53.
Okay.
Fifty to 53.
So they became legal in Norfolk, for four apartments.
Okay. All right, and so...
There's about two minutes left on the video.
And then what, so then what happened? Your sister Dorothy Obluchewski, who was Dorothy Fisher, who was Dorothy?
And she went to Warhol, lived in a home in Warhol.
Okay.
If you remember, that means... They bought that, changed it all into a apartment.
Oh, really? Is it still there?
Got a three or four house.
On West Street, Warhol? On West Street.
It'll come back to them.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, really?
This is the park where they're giving her Benjamin Franklins, I can see them. I want to see them pick the cookies come out of the oven.
Okay, I'll have to ask my husband. Wow.
Well, anyway, then they rented the bottom apartment, so that was four apartments were being rented. I moved out. My brother Donald moved in.
Okay.
And he lived there for about 15 years. And he wanted, they were just...
Okay. Right on, right here on 115. Okay.
So all of those apartments are legal.
Okay, so what, what was all the people that, like, your name is Eva?
Eva and Dorothy Redell lived in the back. Evelyn and Harold Preston lived in the second floor in back. Walter, I forget, Walter, I don't remember what his wife was, lived in front. And downstairs, I got my brother there, my brother.
Okay. And you're the aunt that Dorothy's daughter, Joan, refers to in the letter that I have? You're Mrs. Preston?
Yeah.
Right, her aunt, yeah, okay. And where do you live right now, at Hill Cross Village?
Eddie, hi, Hill Cross Village. And the Jimmy and Redell car was listed 13, Hill Press Village. And Dorothy Redell and Jean Redell live on 20 Rockwood Road.
Well, thank you so much. All right.
Okay, so moving along, the...
Mr. Martin, excuse me one second.
Yes, sir.
Pat, one quick question. I just want to take a quick break here. Deeds don't determine use, they're clearly, is the sole purpose of a deed to convey title? Is that accurate?
Yes, I mean, occasionally, I mean, I would agree with counsel. Occasionally, a deed might refer to a single-family dwelling, or, you know, apartment house, or two-family dwelling, whatever. But no, I mean, that's just descriptive, the deed can pay, the issue is title and a ownership, not use.
All right, I mean, if Mr. Bullock is, if the reason for his not granting this as a four-unit building is that it's not in the deed, that, I mean, that kind of squashes that argument. The assessor's office doesn't have it listed as a four-family home.
I think tab 13 will press that.
13 will press that. All right, I just wanted to get that kind of cleared up on the deed.
Yeah, I mean, similarly, the assessor's information can be evidence of something it's not determined of, of that. Plenty of assessors say it's not determined as to zoning.
Okay, all right.
How about the tax bill?
I mean, it could be evidence, but there's certainly case law that says that, you know, just because the assessor says it's a four-family or a one-family, doesn't mean that for zoning purposes, that's correct, that's just the way it's recorded in the assessor's office for tax purposes. So we cannot bind the board or the building commissioner in terms of zoning determinations. That's for the building commissioner, the first instance, and then to you guys.
Now, what time, what it caused, if we do determine that this is a four-unit, four-apartment building, the building inspector obviously is deemed it's not four units. I mean, some of the evidence that we've seen so far, you know, there's four boilers, the testimony that we're hearing from people that have lived there for years, it's been four units. The deed that Mr. Bullock referred to, it's not in the deed, that clearly is not, doesn't hold water. What, what legally would prevent us from saying, overruling Mr. Bullock?
Okay, I think what Mr. Bullock says is that there's insufficient evidence to substantiate that the property is a legal four-family dwelling. And I would agree again with counsel, because it's really just, is that the issues are, when did it become a four-family? And when did the zoning amendment become effective that would have made a four-family building, or four-family use, non-conforming in that zoning district? If it existed before, that zoning amendment became effective as a four-family, then it can continue on as a pre-existing, non-conforming use. If it became a four-family, was converted to a four-family, after zoning came into effect that would have prevented, prohibited a four-family use in that zoning district, and it's not a pre-existing lawful, non-conforming use. So there may, there are two questions, and it may be, and I, you know, this is, I had some passing information about this case, but until I, you know, sat down this evening, listened to the presentation, and saw some of the packet, there are essentially two questions. When did it become a four-family, and when did zoning prohibit it being a four-family? And if, in this case, the, there may be an issue, and I take it is that 1968 would be significant, because, and I'm speculating here, but I think based on what people have said, it's probably right, that in 1968 is when zoning came in and four families would not be allowed. So it would have to have been. Or it was in 1953. So there's a question as to when were four families prohibited, and it would be on the proponents, the proponents' burden to show which one. Now, if they do show that it's before 1958, 1953, then it doesn't matter whether it's 53 or 68. And I would suggest you do not reach that question here, if you find that it is before 1953. If it's between 1953 and 1968, that it became a four-family, then I think you do have to decide whether it's 1953 or 1968. But if the facts are that it was a four-family before 1953, then I wouldn't go to which one applies, it's not relevant. And what you need to overturn the building inspector is four out of, or five-member board. You need four out of five votes to overturn the building inspector.
All right, I mean, I mean, Mr. Martin, I don't mean to cut you off, but I mean, Pat, correct me if I'm wrong, but his evidence seems pretty overwhelming. What am I missing?
Well, I would just see if there's any other evidence of somebody that, I mean, it does sound like they have direct information.
Are there any, Mike? Mike, are there any opposition or butters?
Yeah, are there any butters here tonight that are here to oppose what Mr. Martin is presenting to the board? The record show there's no opposition. Chris, go ahead.
Is there, is there any tax returns? I mean, whoever owned this property, and we'll use 1953, prior to 1953, are there tax returns showing income from four units? Is there any excise taxes from four cars to four separate people, or six separate people at this residence? I mean, I know some of the things you're saying, and like the H. Olive Day comment. H. Olive Day said, "I was born in the house across street from The Grange." When H. Olive Day was born, it was not a Grange, it was a Baptist church. So we have, we have stories of Norfolk, and we do have testimony from people. But I understand the building commissioner's responsibility is, those are people talking, and again, H. Olive Day said, "I was born across from The Grange." It wasn't a Grange when she was born, so she was given a point in time. My son went to Freeman Centennial School, but someone who moved into town today would say, "Where is that?" My son went to Freeman Centennial School, but someone who moved into town today would say, where is that? Because it's the Freeman Kennedy School today. So I'm trying to get a, from a legal standpoint, do we have anything legally, tax returns, excise, that would point to that saying there was four or five or six different cars or, you know, income statements showing that this was actually four people living there?
Can I address that?
Yeah, go ahead.
First of all, H. Olive Day made that statement in nineteen eighty-eight. In nineteen eighty-eight, it was a Grange.
Absolutely.
And she referred to the apartment building across from the Grange, that's when she's speaking about it. But to your, to your question, do we have anything legal? Testimonies in, in a courtroom is, is legal evidence. Just as much as a tax return could be challenged. I don't have access to people's tax returns, it's private information. So I don't know whether they reported income off it or not. In the packet, I do have all the census tracts that are available. And they're all in there, they're all highlighted, they don't go all the way back. But I do have the, the federal census back in nineteen thirty and nineteen forty. In nineteen thirty, it's going to demonstrate that it was a two-family. In nineteen forty, it's also going to do that. Then you heard the testimony of the lady who said what happened. It correlates perfectly with this. That in nineteen forty, when her grandparents lived, she moved in, and went from a two to a three to a four. The reason the nineteen fifty census is not available is because the federal government waits seventy years to release it. We don't want to wait another six years to get that document. This process has been going on quite some time, not with this board, but because of the history over the last year or so to try to get this issue resolved. I have, I have building permits back to nineteen eighty-five in that, in that book, that I would say would be admissible in court, that all refer to the use of the building, multi-family tenants. It's been well documented on every, I haven't found a document in all of this mountain of evidence that says otherwise. We had to stop our research because January twenty-ninth came upon us. But we went through hundreds of hours of research to get this. We found nothing to say otherwise. The only thing I don't have here is a biblical reference to it. I don't know what else you could show. I have an eighteen seventy-six atlas showing the building there in eighteen seventy-six on a county layout. That was, that was Abraham Lincoln times. I mean, that's how far back we're going here to show this. I have video testimony. I didn't have the nerve, even as an attorney, to ask the sweet lady who was eighty-eight or eighty-nine years old to come down here on a cold January night at eight-thirty to sit in front of you so that you could ask her all these questions face-to-face. If we have to do it in court, I'll try to do it, but you're welcome to go up and meet with her. She's, she's a lovely lady, she's got a great memory. That tape was unedited, it was not scripted, it was impromptu.
On tab twenty-two in the book, you got, you referenced the nineteen forty census?
Yes.
So what is that telling us then?
It suggests to you that it's two-family at that time.
Right. Okay. It's the same thing with the nineteen thirty census, right?
Correct. And that would tie in right to the testimony you heard, that it was a two-family.
And you're saying it became a four-family when?
I'm not telling you anything, I'm just presenting the evidence. She's telling you it was between nineteen fifty to fifty-three.
Okay.
And, and while counsel said, don't bring up the issue tonight of zone, of the zoning bylaw, now I have to, because it seems to be questioned as to, if I can't prove or find nineteen fifty-three, I certainly have a stronger case prior to nineteen sixty-eight. If you look at tab number eighteen, there's a ZVA decision in your packet from two thousand seven on this very issue of pre-existing non-conforming. And if you flip through the tabs or the pages, I've highlighted that this board, I think, I think the chairman was an associate member at that time, made a fine, well, they, well, they ruled against, ruled against the appellant. They instructed the appellant that if you could show us prior to June of nineteen sixty-eight that that use was in, in existence at that time, you win. They reiterated that time and time again by more than one board now. And then somebody on the board said, well, what kind of evidence would you show? Well, maybe a town census, those types of things. We have put everything in there that this board directed back in two thousand seven, and the board at that time said nineteen sixty-eight. There's a copy, not the full di- I have the zoning bylaw here, it's certified. Your zoning bylaw is certified to nineteen sixty-eight. That's the year. It says it adopted nineteen sixty-eight. I have a minutes from the town meeting that voted that in nineteen sixty-eight. And the issue at that time was, the nineteen fifty-three zoning bylaw, it was not amended, it was rescinded. And it says rescinded. In fact, there was fanfare in celebration about that. If you read the town report, which is in there and it's highlighted, from the planning board saying, we are so ecstatic, we have a new zoning bylaw. I don't know, anyone gets excited about, hey, we have an amendment. No, they, they said, they cleared the decks back then, because there was an issue with the nineteen fifty-three on whether it was valid or not. Town meeting went to it, and they rescinded the fifty-three. They voted in new zoning bylaws in nineteen sixty-eight. Today, your, your zoning bylaw is certified nineteen sixty-eight. That's when it was adopted, back in two thousand seven, same case before this board, different members, obviously, said nineteen sixty-eight. And as far as the use, the town looked to buy this building. David, so I just want you to know, there's been nothing done under the cover of darkness with the use of that building. The town went through that building, it's in there, the CPC minutes. They said it's a four-family. All the permits that have ever been pulled on that building going back to nineteen eighty-five, it's a four-family. The chief has been in that building number of times. Most recently, a couple of weeks ago, he comes through every year, the letters are in there, it's fine. There's no, there's no issues with zoning. So you can feel good about making this determination. The, the police chief has opined that there's never been an incident at that building for the last ten years. So it's not a problem, it's not a problem for our community. We have four units there, most of the tenants have been there for a long time. It's, it's housing, the building is a hundred and forty years old. And to have challenge now after all this evidence, I just, I don't see that. I, I don't see the challenge to that.
I mean, at some point, you have to, um, just apply, is this reasonable? It's got four burners, four boilers, or four apartments. We've got pages and pages of testimony.
There's no opposition?
There's no opposition. I mean, we can go on here ad nauseam, unless you feel differently, Chris. I just, um...
Chief Bushnell's been through the place, okay?
His letters are in there, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I can't see why we're going to belabor this point. Mr. Martin's done, um, you know, a lot of work. I mean, unless the board feels differently, can we, um, move forward with this? Okay.
Need a motion, right?
Yes. Who wants to make a motion? Chris, uh, Ward Smith is for us.
Make a motion, appeal to, to overturn.
Return, yeah.
Yeah, we have to close the hearing.
Oh, close the public hearing?
Yeah.
Make the motion to close the public hearing for the appeal of the Realty Trust.
Second? Okay, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, now let's do the...
It should be to grant the appeal. The motion would be to grant the appeal.
Is there an, is there an official deliberation or?
Yeah. Yeah, we're gonna, we'll deliberate this, okay. All right, we just wanted to get through this, and, um, we'll deliberate this in our, um, in, I, we've, you know, testimony's been great, yeah, we've gotten everything that we need to, to move forward and deliberate this at our next meeting, and, uh, which we, which we will do.
Thank you.
Your next meeting, you deliberate, deliberate it, or do we get a judgment?
No, we'll deliberate it at our March fifth meeting.
So it's artificially a four-family till you deliberate at March? I can't do anything until you, there's a decision.
One thing that, just to be aware of, is that since it's an appeal, you need to make your decision, file your decision with the town clerk within a hundred days of when the date of the appeal was filed. So if March fifth is, um, beyond the hundred days, I would suggest that you request the applicant to agree to an extension, and that you file, that that be in writing, and that that be filed with the town clerk.
Yep, we're fine with that.
So if it's, um...
You see December's twelfth.
December twelfth, so count it, um, December, January, February, March, you're probably okay. I would, I would suggest that you do an extension perhaps to just the end of March, just so that, to cover everybody.
Can we say March fifteenth?
March fifth.
But we'll do an extension if you need a couple, a couple of...
In case we have a big snowstorm.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Our hearing will be the fifteenth, the fifth.
The fifth, but, um, but then you have to write it, you know, write up, file it with the town clerk, and if by some chance it gets continued again because of a snowstorm or something, I just, and I think it's... Yeah, you need, yeah, and you need, you're gonna need four votes to, um, to actually vote on it, so...
So March thirtieth?
So I would suggest March thirtieth would be safe, um, and that you have that in writing from the applicant's attorney and, from the appellant's attorney, and that you have to file it with the town clerk.
Okay.
Within the hundred days.
All right. Mr. Martin, can you afford us a, um...
Yes.
In writing, an extension?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Two more to go.
Two more to go.
Two more to go.
I get to go. Oh, you want me to stay?
Yeah, two more to go.
Oh, oh, of course.
It's gonna be fun.
Gee, okay, no, 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 I'm sorry. You're gonna kill him, no, no, no. I didn't know if I was gonna, okay. Bye.
What do you think this is, the term?
Just ask him. He's not giving my point. So, uh, he said, he said, so then, they went, because he said, to pay for the evidence.
Assistant Franklin, Massachusetts. I'm here this evening representing the MS Cooney Realty Trust in reference to the denial of a building permit for the application to build a single-family home on a parcel of land off of Lake Shore Drive in Norfolk. With me this evening is Ms. Mary Shaheen, who is the beneficiary of that trust, the MS Cooney Realty Trust. Ms. Shaheen is also the owner of an abutting property, a, in fact, at that time, compliant. But I'd just like to point out to you the, the, the land in question. This is, uh, this is the abutters map. This is the, um, the record plan of land recorded at the registry deed. All of these documents are in the bound documents that you have before you, together with a litany of the history of the deeds of these properties. I am not going to go into those, I don't believe that's frankly an issue. And I think the record clearly establishes that these lots became separately owned in nineteen forty-eight, and the status has never changed since then. I will rely upon the documents in my presentation materials. And as I say, I don't believe there's any question whatsoever about that. The lots in question are the three lots here, shown in yellow on this plan. The assessor's records show them as one lot, twenty-four dash three. The lots shown in pink are the two lots that comprise, uh, the land upon which Mary's single-family home is located. She bought her first lot, the lot upon which her home is, is located, in nineteen seventy-four. Several years later, the abutting lot became available, she purchased that. In nineteen eighty-seven, the three lots, for the purposes of this hearing, we're talking about those as one lot. That is the only application in question. We're not arguing they remain three separate lots, it is being presented as one lot. But she did acquire these parcels, or I should say, the trust acquired those parcels in nineteen eighty-seven. Now, if I may, I'd like Mary to tell you how it came about, that she acquired those parcels, and then I'd like to come back to you and talk a little bit about the law and why we believe that this is a pre-existing non-conforming lot to which a building permit should be issued. Mary?
I get to you, Mary. Okay. This coming May will mark forty years that I've lived in Norfolk. I bought my house in nineteen seventy-four and moved in on Memorial Day weekend, fulfilling a lifetime desire to live on waterfront property, however humble. The seller had added a three-room addition, which implied that certain issues would have to be addressed. Three years later, in nineteen seventy-seven, the adjacent property was advertised for sale by the town for non-payment of taxes, and after the required two-year waiting period, I acquired that in nineteen eighty. That was the deciding factor for my staying in my home. With regard to lots A two seventy-five, two seventy-six, and two seventy-seven, the property in question, I came home from work one day, saw the for-sale sign, drove to Boomer Real Estate and offered to buy it. After the closing at lunch, the realtor told me that the seller suggested she knock on my door, but I was, as I said, at work. Years before, my abutters and I talked about buying those lots if they became available and dividing them between us, but we came to, we were informed that that couldn't be done. I was advised by Attorney Frank Gross to put the property into a trust, thus separating it from the house lot and guaranteeing the right to build on it. Attorney Gross was the trustee. And incidentally, all of these lots are grandfathered and registered in Land Court. Years ago, I dreamed of building my home on the property, had an informal visit from a local engineer, and browsed magazines looking for pictures of homes that might be suitable for the contour of the land. I also had the town water line extended to the lot. When looking over the assessor's, um, records, the lot has been described as developable, and as recently as two thousand eleven, it was described as developable, and perhaps even later, but I haven't checked back. In recent years, it seems that I've been getting conflicting opinions regarding changes in the law, status of grandfathered clauses, differences in various properties. So I felt that I needed to get legal counsel, and I, that's why I'm here.
Thank you.
Thank you. The one thing I would like to impress upon this board is that before the time Mary purchased the property, it was extremely important to her that she be able to build on this property. She wasn't buying it for investment purposes. Once they realized, they were told, maybe by the building commissioner, whomever, that the land could not be further subdivided... Once they understood that the land could not be further subdivided because of its non-conforming status, it became imperative to her that she be able to build upon it, if not immediately, at some point in the future. In that regard, as Mary referenced, she was represented by Mr. Frank Gross, who's, I know, very well-known to this town, practiced here for many, many years. And what Mr. Gross, um, designed for her was a trust, for her to take the title and trust. At the time of that conveyance, when she purchased those three lots, that was March of nineteen eighty-seven, he gave to Mary a certificative title. That certificative title indicates how the property was passed, the title referenced, that sort of thing. And his last statement was, these three lots combined are a building lot under the grandfather zoning provisions, but they must meet the requirements of the Board of Health. This is something Mary relied upon when she purchased the property. The trust was designed to do this very thing, to keep it separate and segregated from the parcel where she lived as, as a single-family home. And I would submit this as part of our evidence to you, that at all times, Mary understood and was assured that these properties remained intact. The last recorded conveyance, uh, as far as a plan is concerned, is dated nineteen forty, forty-five, I believe. Mary, uh, the, the, the lots were separated out and have remained separate from any adjoining land since nineteen forty-eight. Way back in the day, uh, we had a zoning bylaw that did in fact allow for a non-conforming lot to be buildable. That bylaw was a nineteen forty-five by, bylaw, section eight, required minimum frontage of a hundred feet, a minimum area of ten thousand feet. It reads in part, and, let me just skip to the important part. "In residence districts as provided in section three, land laid out after the adoption of this bylaw shall provide for each dwelling a minimum frontage of one hundred feet and a minimum lot area of ten thousand square feet. Lots shown on any plan duly recorded by deed or plan at that time this bylaw is adopted may be used." So that would have been the most recent bylaw to the last recordation of any lots, uh, insofar as we're referencing. So, that would have been the most recent bylaw to the last recordation of any lots insofar as we're referencing them today. We are petitioning under section E two A of our bylaw, exempted lots, that indicates a lot or parcel in a residential district having an area width less than that required by this section may be developed for single residential use, provided that such lot or parcel complies with the specific exemptions of section six of Massachusetts General Laws, chapter forty-eight. Chapter forty-eight, section six, basically provides, as I'm sure you know better than I, a perpetual exemption from increased zoning requirements to lots once they are buildable under the local bylaw. It reads specifically, "Any increase in area frontage width, yard, or depth requirements of a zoning ordinance shall not apply to a lot for single and two-family residential use, which at the time of recording or endorsement, whichever occurs sooner, was not held in common ownership with adjoining land, conformed to then existing requirements, and had less than the proposed requirement, but at least five thousand square feet and fifty thousand feet of frontage." These in essence are the three statutory criteria for this lot to qualify. It must have existed at the time of recording, had a minimum of five thousand feet, fifty feet of frontage, no problem whatsoever with that. The second criteria is that it was not held in common ownership with any adjoining land. And the third is that it conformed to the then existing requirement. I don't believe we have any problem whatsoever with that. I believe the issue with this lot comes into play, very specifically because of the nature of the trust owning those three lots, or for the purposes of this discussion, the one lot. It is and has been called a Realty Trust. The title is MS Cooney Realty Trust. However, I would point out to you that a Realty Trust, also known as a nominee trust, a somewhat unique creature in Massachusetts, has very specific requirements to qualify as a nominee trust. One of those very specific requirements is that the beneficiaries specifically and explicitly must direct the trustees to take any and all actions. In essence, the beneficiaries control the property. It is titled in the name of the trust, however, the beneficiaries control the actions of the trustee. That is what makes a nominee trust unique. I would ask you to look very carefully at the language of this specific trust. You will find it in tab twenty-seven. Unlike the language of a typical nominee Realty Trust, where you have specific language stating that the trustees may only act at the direction of the beneficiaries, this trust does not have that language. The trust states that the trustee has full power to borrow money. There is no requirement whatsoever of a directive of the trustee. In order to amend this trust, as found on page three of the trust, you will see that it requires a writing signed by the trustee and the beneficiaries. The beneficiary cannot act unilaterally to amend the trust. This specific trust indicates that one trustee can act alone if all the trustees give the sole trustee authority. This trustee has full power to execute deeds and instruments of record. Only the trustee is required to sign and certify affairs regarding the trust. I would suggest to you, this is not a typical nominee trust, and I don't know if it was artful draftsmanship or there was a method to the madness, but this does not qualify as a nominee trust. And all the cases that I'm sure you're very familiar with, the Serena case, the Serrenti cases, the DiStefano cases, all discuss the fact that when you have a merger between the beneficiaries and the trustee, that in essence destroys the concept of separate control and ownership. And it's not so much ownership, the cases have said, it's the control of the property. And that has what has been problemsome in many of the cases where it has been held that property owned by a Realty Trust on one lot and perhaps a husband and wife on the adjoining lot has in fact merged. And the courts have very specifically said that it's the issue of control, the fact that the exact same beneficiaries can control the actions of the trustee. In several of these cases, Serena being one, and a more recent one, I'll give you the site in just a moment, go on and make great distinction that in many of these trusts, the trustees and the beneficiaries are in fact the same people. And that's a whole different concept of merger, but they emphasize that these trusts give the trustees very sweeping powers. And that was a quote, "The sweeping powers granted to them as trustees is what triggered the control negating the separate ownership." That was in the case of Rice versus Quirk, a relatively recent case in two thousand twelve. Serena, I want to point out to you, one of the leading cases in this field, the trustees and the beneficiaries were the same people. So, of course, they absolutely controlled the property and any abutting property that they owned either individually or tenants by entirety were in essence by controlled by the same entities. That is not the situation here. The trustee of this trust had powers not incumbent upon the direction of the beneficiary. He did not need Mary to direct him to do anything regarding the trust. He had those powers specifically in the instrument without any requirement whatsoever that she or any other beneficiary direct him to take the action. I suggest to you that that clearly distinguishes this trust from the typical trust you talk about in this scenario, where you have a merger of control and ownership. Mary has owned this land as a beneficiary since nineteen seventy-four. The tax bills have always gone first to Mr. Gross, until I believe it was two thousand ten when he left town, and now to a successor trustee. Mary does in fact pay the tax bill, of course she does, she is the sole beneficiary. However, she does not exclusively control the property. The trustee does. And I believe that is the most significant factor to keep in mind when looking at this particular application. I don't believe there's any issue that this was a legal lot by virtue of that exemption. In nineteen sixty-five, if you will, anytime the zoning amendments changed, this was a legal lot back in nineteen forty-five, forty-eight, when it became separated from abutting land. It has never, ever been recombined in common ownership. The only thing that took place is Mary bought the property in trust. The trust, however, is a much stronger independent trust than a nominee trust, notwithstanding the name Realty, which I know generally, you know, means it's a nominee trust. But if you look at the language, and I'd just like to point out to you a little case law talking about a nominee trust, if I could. And this is a case from nineteen ninety-four, Roberts versus Roberts, just very briefly. The typical features of a nominee trust are, one, the names of the beneficiaries are filed with the trustees rather than publicly. Two, trustee may simultaneously serve as a beneficiary. Three, the trustees lack the power to deal with trust property except as directed by the beneficiaries. Four, a third party may be relying on the disposition of trust pursuant to an instrument signed by the trustees. And five, the beneficiaries may terminate the trust at any time. It goes on to state, "The third listed feature is the key to the nominee nature of the trust." That third feature is, "The trustees lack power to deal with any trust property except as directed by the beneficiaries." Again, I ask you to read the trust carefully. There is nothing in that trust that requires the trustee to be directed by the beneficiary to do anything. And I believe that clearly distinguishes this. We would argue that the property has been separately held since it was acquired in nineteen seventy-four. I'm sorry, nineteen eighty-seven, her house was acquired in nineteen seventy-four. She purchased it for, first of all, with the dream to build her own home. And in that regard, I'd like to submit also as part of our evidence packet, she had lovely old plans, designs. There is unfortunately no date on them, but I think the fact that they're yellowed might suggest, she's had these for a very long time, and I think just the design of them might suggest that they're quite old. But this was her dream to build on this lot. Again, there are tax bills and I certainly appreciate the comment that was made earlier, that what the assessor's records said does not necessarily determine the use or classification of a property. But I believe that it is significant that you know, that, you know, we have cards from two thousand two, two thousand three, two thousand eleven, each indicating that the property is developable. The other thing I'd like to point out, that this parcel of land, which is just about a half an acre of land at this point in time, the three parcels combined, is currently assessed at one ninety-six eight, I believe it, yeah, one ninety-six eight. In the not-too-recent past, it was assessed as high as two hundred and forty thousand dollars. I would suggest that that is quite high for a parcel of vacant land that would be deemed not buildable. Granted, it is waterfront property, but it is in fact a very small parcel, and I believe just the assessment alone suggests that this was deemed to be buildable land. I would like to submit these as well. Mary also had a few articles, something from nineteen forty-six in fact, that doesn't really go to the point I'm trying to make vis-à-vis the ownership of the property, but it talks about the nature of the small lakefront lots there, how desirable they were and the interest, and a newspaper also discussing that. I would like to submit these documents, together with the big packet that I submitted earlier, with all the deeds, showing how the property has been separately owned since the nineteen forties. I would ask you to consider the letter from Attorney Gross, which I will submit to you, indicating that in his opinion, which was extremely important to Mary, that this remained a buildable lot when she acquired it in nineteen eighty-seven. And I would suggest that if you carefully read the terms of the trust, you apply the relevant law regarding trust and the concept of merger, that this is a lot of land that Mary has never exercised control or dominion over. She simply acquired it for investment purposes, buildable purposes. At this point in time, we would suggest to you that it does qualify as a pre-existing non-conforming lot. It did comply with the zoning requirements by way of exemption, and we do believe that she is in fact entitled to a building permit for a single-family home on that lot, on those three lots submitted to you as one lot on Lake Shore Drive. And if you have any questions, I'll be very, I know you're very busy tonight and I've probably babbled on, but if you have any questions that I can elaborate on, I'd be very happy to do so.
Do you want me to itemize them for you or just give them to you?
Okay, great. And if I may too, may I give you Mary's written statement so that you just have that if you, you know, are curious as to current law, current analogy?
I'm gonna kind of let you lead this discussion, Bob, but I do have a question for Attorney Maitland. If you look at some recent case law, Plenary Board of Noel versus Serena and Preston versus Board of Appeals of Hull, how do those two cases affect your argument?
Well, clearly, I think those cases stand for the premise that the evolution of zoning is for towns to control the availability of lots and to have conforming lots in their town. That I think is one of the overall quests of zoning, to make things conform. However, I would draw your attention to a relatively recent case, Rourke versus Rothman, which is highlighted somewhat in the memorandum submitted to you, and I think is extremely compelling. And it addresses the Serena case, the Serrenti, and some of those cases that do seem to say we've got to end these non-conforming lots. And this case goes on, just came down from our SJC in two thousand seven, in very, very strong language, indicating, the plain language of chapter forty-eight, section six, grants a perpetual exemption from increased local zoning requirements to certain lots that were once buildable under local bylaws. There's very strong language that, it says, "Consistent with our policy, we are construing various provisions of section six broadly to protect landowners' expectations of being able to build on once valid lots." And I think if you look at this case factually, it's somewhat similar to the one at hand in that, you know, way back when, there was a zoning bylaw of the town that specifically exempted it, it then merged and became the forty-eight, section six. But this case upheld the lot and I think it goes on very powerfully distinguishing also Adamowitz, you know, some of the cases that really backtracked from allowing lots to be developed upon. But this is going forward and saying that they're reading it, that such construction furthers the purpose of section six, which is to protect once valid, buildable residential lots. I think it distinguishes a lot of the cases that, you know, we've come to rely upon, maybe not as far as I would like it to go, but it goes pretty doggone far and has very strong language, I think, supporting once conforming, once a buildable lot, it's a buildable lot. You really have to go for a stretch because they're saying that is the purpose of section forty-eight, section six, the first sentence, I believe it is of paragraph four, to provide that perpetual exemption. And because there are so few lots of land like this left, it's not like it's going to have a steamroller effect and where all these lots are going to come out of the closet, because they had to have been a legal lot back before the zoning changed, you know, however old the lots are. So, I would refer you and urge you to read that case, which I think has really brought those cases quite along. And again, in some of those cases where it talks about merger, I would ask you to look very carefully at the facts. Where they're talking about a Realty Trust, they're talking about the trustees and the beneficiaries being the exact same persons, which is not the situation here at all. Never mind the powers in the trust itself. And I think that that really distinguishes Mary's case, and I think she did everything she needed to do to set this parcel separate, to maintain its integrity. She hasn't touched it, she hasn't altered lot lines. The only action whatsoever, and for this application, actually, I believe the building commissioner requested it, an engineer put some elevation stakes on it so we could submit the elevation plan to you. But she has done everything she needed to do. She retained an attorney, she did what he advised her to do, she always wanted to build, she always understood she can build. And I don't think anything in the trust or anything that she has done with the property in any way negates or shows that she took control over that property and caused it to merge into her house lot next door. It remains an independent, integral lot and I think is entitled to the building permit. And we would ask you to please consider reversing the building inspector's decision in that regard.
You've done some research on this, what would you like to add?
Well, just, I just want to, please correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems as though we have, there are two things going on here. One of them is this whole world of bylaw and whether or not this is a buildable lot. The other one is this world of merger and how this trust affects whether or not these lots merge. Is that right?
I agree that that's in essence the issue when you apply this, the statutory, they're the three requirements. But I don't think there's any question, based on the bylaw that was in effect back in nineteen forty-five, that it clearly was a legal lot before the law. they're the three requirements. But I don't think there's any question, based on the bylaw that was in effect back in 1945, that it clearly was a legal lot before the law changed. I don't think that's an issue.
Okay, okay, but, I mean, not to question whether, but that's what we're discussing, though. I mean, the purpose of discussing, by this whole historical perspective about why there was a bylaw, and these lot sizes, and the ownership interest, and how it all came up through, and so forth. But then the separate issue is this doctrine of merger.
Right, oh, no question, it's a separate issue.
Okay, okay. And so, and back in '09, the town asked town council, Bob Bullock asked town council to comment on some of these, one of these issues, and in there, he addresses this trust. And I just, the only question I really have about this is, after this determination by town council, what did the owner of the property do? I mean, why was this not the litigator that just dropped it?
I can't speak for Mary. The previous attorney that I had had been ill for several months and didn't feel that he could continue with it. So after asking around, I found Elizabeth, and she's picking up the ball and going with it now.
But now, okay, back in '09, after your counsel was not feeling well, you decided to just drop it back then?
It was later than that that I dropped it, I think.
Okay, yeah, the George Hall...
It wasn't, I didn't really drop it, I was just in between attorneys, really.
Okay.
And I, well...
And if I can just, and just one more, just kind of a question...
Of course.
Regarding trust, all right? And I really appreciate the fact that you peeled in the difference between a nominee trust, you know, and one that is not a nominee trust. And so, in your opinion, this is not a nominee trust, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and so, like, most trusts, like all trusts, if you will, there's this separation between legal and equitable titles, the trustees and beneficiaries.
Correct.
Okay, but Mary's a beneficiary, the trustee has the legal title to this property, and still does to this day.
That's correct. Well, it's not Mr. Gross any longer.
But whoever the trustee is.
Right, right, that's correct.
Okay.
And he has legal title. And I think if you look at Mr. Hall's letter, again, everyone was talking about a nominee trust. And I think if you were talking about a traditional nominee trust, where the trustee can do nothing but for the direction of the beneficiary, I understand it. And that's what a lot of the case law talks about, the fact that the trustee can only do what the beneficiary tells them to do, and if the beneficiary is the same person who owns the property next door, they, in essence, control both lots. But in this instance, Mary, as the beneficiary, never controlled the trust lots. Frank did.
Yeah.
And those powers are very clear and very strong, without any requirement that he rely upon a directive from Mary to do so.
My other question, and maybe something we talk about internally, is, but Mary had the right, at any point in time, to dissolve this trust. And the Declaration of Trust says the trust may be terminated at any time by the beneficiary.
That is true.
Written letter to, so if we gave a building permit today, tomorrow, Mary could dissolve the trust, and she would own the five lots outright, correct?
If she chose to dissolve the trust.
She can dissolve that trust at any time.
That's correct.
So though Frank Gross, the trustee, had control of the trust...
Yes.
Mary, at any point in time since 1987, could dissolve this trust.
She could.
And she would have ownership of all five lots.
She could, but she didn't.
She didn't, but she had the...
That's right.
But she had, but at a moment's notice.
And that's not unique, though, to a nominee trust.
I understand.
Lots of grantor trusts can be dissolved.
According to the 40, Section 6, it is not held in common ownership.
Right.
And I realize we have a trust out there, but who controls that trust? Who has really control of that trust? Mary can change that trust at a moment's notice. So can the trustee, but so can Mary.
Correct. But let me take it a step further. I think it almost requires a factual inquiry, what control was exercised. And some of the recent cases said that specific thing. For example, there's a situation where a husband owns Lot A, husband and wife loan owned Lot B. They said it merged, you control both parcels. Upon a determination of the facts, and again, they could have dissolved that trust at any time, and there would have been a merger of title. However, that, the court in that case found that the wife, even though she wrote letters, I think, to the tax collector, she hired an engineer, she did exercise some control over the property that she arguably had no ownership interest in, the court found that that was not enough to show that she exercised control. And I certainly take your point, could she have terminated? She did. She could have, that was a power set forth in the trust. That's not unique to a nominee trust. Lots of trusts require that. What makes this case, I think, as sticky as it is, is because it's being referred to as a nominee trust, that the beneficiary was the one who directed all the action. First of all, that's not the language in this trust. Secondly, factually speaking, there were no directives. She didn't do any of that. Why would she have gone to the expense and the trouble to hire an attorney, to take the title in separate name, to maintain this trust all these years, just as to dissolve it and take it back in her own name? We have indicated in our memorandum, she set forth to maintain the integrity of this lot. She wanted to maintain its buildable status. There's nothing wrong with doing that. The question, I believe, before this board is, the vehicle that was chosen, did it do it? Was it effective? There's no question that was Mary's intent. It has always been Mary's intent to build upon that property. She did everything she possibly could, including hiring one of the most, you know, competent attorneys with a very long history in this town, to do that very thing. And now we're going back into that document and scratching our heads and say, was it enough? And I would ask you to take that into consideration, that it's not just what she could do, and I concede, yes, she could terminate the trust. She didn't, she won't. And I would ask you to consider that.
Questions for the board? Pat, did you want to weigh in?
Well, yes and no. I do think that the 2009 opinion from town council at that time needs to be given great weight. I do not know and have not looked at the documents or the cases, again, in such detail as to give you an opinion off the top of my head as to whether or not the particular facts of this trust and this property would be sufficient to distinguish it from Preston versus Hall and Serena and the other cases that are cited there, which, I mean, I agree with the opinion of town council from 2009, I mean, I think that's correct. Whether there are distinguishing facts, and maybe more recent cases that council has cited, I cannot tell you off the top of my head without looking at everything. So, you know, if you wanted us to take another stab at it, based on all the evidence that's presented tonight, I mean, we could do that, if you're prepared to go forward, because based on your understanding of where things are, I mean, you can do that as well. Again, I would point out, though, that this is an appeal, as the last case was, and the 100 days, so I don't know when this appeal was filed.
It's December.
And I just want to have your file on the clock, the calendar on that.
Do you know when the clock's ticking?
Oh, we filed December 2nd.
I would probably then suggest, if you're going to continue, if you're not going to decide tonight, that you also continue it till the end of March, and have an agreement from council to extend the time.
You wouldn't have a problem, Eric? Could you put in writing for us?
Certainly. And what date would you like?
I think the last one was, what, March 30th?
March 30th.
And at the risk of complicating things further, I am interested, if anybody knows, what sort of generated the decision, or the opinion from town council in 2009? It's a opinion to the building inspector, but was there any application? Was there a request for zoning enforcement? Was there anything before the board? Was there an application for a building permit at that? I mean, why would the building inspector have asked for an opinion of town council as review of memorandum accompanying title documents from Neil Roach? In what context was that given to the building inspector, the building commissioner? Do you have those documents as part of the record before you? Because if this was a request for zoning enforcement, or some application for a building permit, and it wasn't appealed timely, that could be another issue. So, to the extent that there may be information that is available about that, what happened in 2009, that might be helpful, would add another issue to this whole thing, but...
Well, it's my understanding, I actually sat down with Mr. Bullock before I came down this path, because I too was intrigued why there was a letter when I saw no application. And he confirmed that there was no application at that time, I believe it was, and obviously Mr. Roach submitted a very extensive memorandum with all the documentation regarding title at that time. I think there was a conversation about it, but so far as I know, and in speaking with Mr. Bullock, there was no formal application whatsoever in 2009 or any time prior to that. The first one was our application, which I believe was in October, and Mr. Bullock wrote in November, but obviously checked with him to be certain. But so far as I know, there has been no formal application. It was just, I believe, an informal conversation, and because it was submitted so formally with the documents, maybe that's what prompted the response from Mr. Hall. I honestly don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I would then recommend that the board look at the building commissioner's, the building department's file on this. It does seem to me it is unusual to have such a...
Questions.
Such a question and such a thorough opinion, if there wasn't a request in some form for zoning enforcement or a zoning determination by the building inspector, and then apparently nothing was done until four years later, in 2013, so. Just another question.
Do you want to continue the public hearing?
Yes.
You plan to close the meeting?
No.
Anybody want to continue?
We'll continue this.
I make a motion to continue the public hearing with regard to the appeal of Ms. Cooney Realty Trust, for lots...
You have to get a date and time.
Yep, till March 5th at 8:30. All in favor?
Aye.
Do you want an opinion of town council, Jason, or do you want to just get more information at this point?
What's that?
Do you want an opinion from us, that meeting, based on what the evidence is now, or do you want to get everything else in at that time and then see where you are?
Why don't we do the latter? Bob was going to talk to Bob Bullock. We've got a lot to study here, we've got a lot to go through.
Right, and then you can decide whether you want to have us weigh in at that point.
Yeah, let's do that, because there's a lot here to go through.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you for coming out tonight. Thank you very much.
May I just ask a quick question? I'm sorry, I missed the introduction to the beginning. Are you our new town council?
Yes, I'm, sorry, I'm Patricia Cantor from Copeland and Page.
Okay, great, nice to meet you.
We've been town council for a few years, yes, after George Hall.
I sort of drew that conclusion, but I wanted to be sure.
Do you want to pack it?
Sure. Okay, put that off.
In case we have to do something.
Someone's done to that.
I think that's the same.
How's the tape? I close meetings right now. What time is it? It's hour early running out.
You can't open windows.
Were we supposed to?
Is it getting warm in here?
Yeah, a little warm. Are those windows open?
Yes. We've got to do that. Any buttons of the last year, we didn't. We don't think it's... We didn't have no one, no one's done to shut up either. Okay.
Have to slide the little top things out on each side.
I mean, just sometimes remember. She'd never make it as a second story, man. I'll tell you that.
Yeah.
Crack that. Tom, I said, you don't open that window an inch.
Yeah, it's funny. We get two inches.
Okay.
Bob Bullock did ask for it.
So everybody's here for the next...
Actually, it's only one, just one, they're related.
Thank you.
Represented differently?
He counted, he counted.
You get Tom's dress.
We're done.
Feeling pressure. This is the seventh thing to stretch.
Yeah, who are you? Do you have a business card you can give me?
My name is David Rosenberg.
I got this one.
Town council is... I mean, I don't like my business card, but I mean, I can't do anything to communicate with you directly, other than, you know, as authorized by...
School's got all the lights on. They're all one. They're together, yeah.
Whole bunch of stuff, but the biggest issue is that it's plain and simple.
They give the board, Mary, they gave us... They gave us fancy new... They gave us fancy new business cards.
They're all here this year. The trust is here, and Pasture Development Group.
Well, I don't know, since a member of the public asked for it, I guess I should give it to you guys.
We're going to stop the public.
I know, I can kind of, all right, let me just...
What she just gave you again?
No, I don't know if she gave it to you. She gave him this package. Yeah.
You're going to earn your money tonight.
Maria has a spare bag. No, 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 I mean, it's a call.
Yeah, they're right there.
Will it open up?
Yeah.
Okay. And I thought that... He's cooled down faster.
Yeah, it's cooler. That side of that window. Okay, can you, you want to open the public hearing, please?
Can you want to do both as one, right?
Yes. Maria, we can do both as, both of these together?
Yeah, we can do both together.
I'd like to open the public hearing with regard to Rochelle Realty Trust and the Pasture Development Group, LLC, for special permits pursuant to Section I 4A 111, to allow more than 15 dwellings on a lot in the D1 district, and Section D 3E 1C, D 3E 1D, and D 3E 1E, to allow residential dwellings and apartment structures and excavation and filling within the water shed protection district. Properties are located at 106 Main Street and 108 Main Street, Assessor's Map 14, Assessor's Map 24, Lots 56, Lots 8, and Lot 7.
Okay, thank you. Maria, we're going to try to take an attendance list or try to capture everyone who's here. I'm going to invite the applicant up in just a moment, but just a bit of protocol for tonight's hearing. The, if you haven't been to a ZBA hearing before, the applicant will be given an opportunity to present to the board. The board will then ask questions of the applicant. I ask that the board members be recognized by the chair, so that we can keep the question orderly. And then we'll open up questions to the butters who are here, and your questions should be directed to the chair and not directly to the applicant. The applicant will answer, again, to the chair, and that's the way we'll try to keep this fairly organized tonight. So, without further ado, the applicants here?
Be kind of a one-sided meeting, huh?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right. Mr. Chipman, we've opened the public hearing, and we're taking attendance. and not directly to the applicant. The applicant will answer again to the chair. And that's the way we'll try to keep this fairly organized tonight. So without further ado, the applicants here. Be kind of a one-sided meeting, eh?
Sorry, Mr. Chapman.
Okay. All right. Mr. Chipman, we've opened the public hearing.
Okay.
And we're taking attendance at the moment. Are you doing the presentation tonight?
No, Jim Pavlik from Outback Engineering is on his way in.
Okay, okay, all right, good. Mr., is it Pavlik?
Yes.
P-A-B?
L-I-K.
L-I-K, okay. While you're out in the hallway, I kind of laid out some ground rules for the hearing tonight, that the board will begin questioning after the presentation, and then we'll open up questions to the butters and people that are in the audience tonight. And when you're ready, Mr. Pavlik, if you could introduce yourself to the board, and give us a little history on your background and your relationship to this project.
Good evening. I'm Jim Pavlik with Outback Engineering. As far as my background with this project, I'm a civil engineer by training, registered civil engineer with Outback Engineering. Started the firm back in 1997. We specialize in land development projects. And I was brought into this project back in September or so. And there were some, there was a, two proposals pending before the planning board at that time, which included an apartment site on the 108 Main Street site, and duplex homes on the 108 Main Street property. There was some, again, there was a previous engineer involved in that project. And as a result of my involvement, we started over. We've done new survey, new wetland delineation, and completely redesigned the engineering on it. And so we're here tonight seeking special permits under Section I-4... I-4A-11, to allow more than 16 bedrooms on a lot in the B1 outside core district. And under Section D-3, the watershed protection bylaw. So if you'd like, I can give you a brief overview of each site. And they're very similar in nature in terms of, again, the special permits that we're requesting. But what we're showing here on this site plan is the two sides, two sites, side by side. 108, I'm sorry, 106 Main Street is a 5.15 acre site with an existing house in this area. And 108 Main Street is this L-shaped property. It's 3.86 acres. And we're proposing a total of 28 homes on the 106 Main Street property, and 22 on the 108 Main Street property. We've been before the planning board and conservation commission already. And the big question that we're looking to answer tonight, hopefully, is the density. And again, under this section of the bylaw, I-4A-11, we're limited to 16 bedrooms on a single lot. As currently laid out, we have 56 bedrooms and 44 bedrooms. There's another section of the bylaw that seems to contradict this section, and that's under I-7A-1, which indicates that we could do one unit per 5,000 square feet of lot area. And under that calculation, we would be allowed to do up to 33 units on the 106, I'm sorry, the 108 site, and 44 units on 108, 106, I'm sorry. So we're below those thresholds. So that's the relief that we're seeking. We've had, again, as I had mentioned, some additional discussions with the planning board about an alternative layout that they might look more favorably on. And that's what this plan represents. This is the last plan that we represented, presented to the board, which shows a single roadway access, and then a looped roadway. It would be a second interior roadway on the 106 Main Street site. And with this layout, we still have the same number of units on each site. Again, there's a number of engineering details that still have to be worked out with this. But we feel that we're at a position where, you know, we know enough about the site conditions that we need guidance from all the various boards to ultimately get to that final design. And so we're seeking the special permit at this point for the density of, to be allowed to do more than 16 bedrooms per lot.
Excuse me, you mentioned another by, the bylaws, was it I-7A-1?
Yes.
It's in the allowed uses, I think.
So I guess I'd like to open it up to any questions at this point. That's a brief overview. I can get into more details regarding the site layout or septic systems or things like that. But I think those are the broad brush in terms of where we are with the project and seeking your approval of the number of units and bedrooms.
Chris, go ahead.
I have just some general questions. Is this to be, come under like a condominium ownership?
Yes.
So there would be association?
Right. Each property, and again, there's two separate owners, so each property would have its own condominium association. All the roadways would be privately maintained of the entire property, professionally managed, landscaping, snow removal, et cetera.
Looking at these blueprints, where have you allowed for parking for non-residents, visitors, and things like that?
Initially, we've set aside some visitor parking along the stretcher roadway in here. This is essentially green space at the front of the site on both sides. And the board was looking that we distribute that more across the site. So there's other areas that we could provide some additional visitor parking. So we, again, that's another detail that we'd need to incorporate as we go forward. But we would look to disperse that.
So are you asking us tonight to, what, which plan are we looking at? The engineering that you've done here, or this conceptual plan? What are we talking about tonight?
This is the plan that the planning board seems to be most in favor of right now. So we could make this a formal submission. I guess, you know, in seeking the special permit, I guess I would expect that it would be subject to approvals by the planning board and conservation commission, and those additional details to be added. So that was, that's where we're at at this point.
Could you explain one more time, though, within the 1-7, I-7A-1, explain how this would fit within that?
Under that requirement, it's, we're allowed to have one unit per 5,000 square feet of land area.
I'm sorry, can you define units any better?
It's a dwelling unit.
So are we talking, so are we talking bedrooms? Are we talking...
Okay, let me, let me take a step back, and I can explain further.
I know I'm asking you to repeat something earlier, but I want to be clear on that.
Sure. In the B1 outside core district, we're allowed to do multifamily-style projects. And by special permit from the planning board, they allow one unit per 5,000 square feet of lot area. So based on that calculation, we have five, over five acres of land area here. We could get up to 44 units. Five acres times, you know, 43,560 square feet.
How many units are there?
We're proposing 28. And the bylaw also indicates that there can be no more than two bedrooms per unit. So when I've been describing the units, they're all two-bedroom style homes.
In your five-acre calculation, are you including the water?
Yes. That's not excluded under the bylaw. It includes the total parcel area.
Again, it's true, I'm sorry, I wrap my head around this. This district, zoning district, this would be unlike, let's say, a district where I live. And I live in North Walk. I live in a residential community. So my community does not allow for multifamily dwellings. This area does allow, this is obviously for multifamily.
Yes.
And so, and, so you are looking, you're looking for special permit for the, in excess of 16 bedrooms, or one unit per 5,000 square feet. Each unit could comprise of two bedrooms.
Right. We, yeah, if I can just further explain that. Under I-7A-1, we are below the threshold of 5,000 square feet per unit. We would be allowed 44, we're proposing 28. Would be allowed on 108 to have up to 33 units. We're doing 22. It's the other bylaw section, I-4A-11, that specifies if we propose more than 16 bedrooms on a lot, then we require a special permit from this board. So we meet the one criteria, but it triggers that we have a special permit from this board.
And again, just, so you're here because the buildings, department, says we cannot approve a permit for this unless you get a special permit.
We had informal discussions with the building inspector, but yes, he indicated that...
So that's the procedural aspect of what's going on here?
Yes. So it's, we're running these several permits simultaneously. With the planning board, we're seeking special permits, site plan approval. We're also seeking approvals from the conservation commission for, under a notice of intent filing. And then simultaneously, we need the approval of this board. It's a cumbersome process.
Yes, no, it's a vicious project. Question for you.
Yes. Just looking at the bylaw, really.
I always thought water was excluded in the land area calculation.
I would have to look at the bylaw.
I just need clarification on that.
If it's excluded in, I mean, by law, I have to look at your bylaw. So if you can point me to a section, or I can spend a minute or two trying to find it, or if somebody else pointed out to me. But generally, it's, I mean, well, many bylaws require a certain amount of upland, or, you know, basically for the buildable area, or some, or an envelope, or a circle, or something like that, where, for what you count towards what is considered the buildability of a lot. I would have to look at your bylaw to see...
If you can take a minute while we go through the questioning process, that would be an important piece of...
I want to look at the definitions. Lot area. Could be in lot area.
I guess when you say you're in compliance with I-7A-1, that's an allowable use, but it's by a special permit, which you don't have yet. So you're not in compliance since you don't have that special permit.
Correct. But we meet the standard, right?
Is the standard for special permit for a, for a planning board special permit the same as ours? So it's not only that you fit within this, but they have the same criteria we have to go through in harmony with the original intent and all that good stuff? Because then it's not necessarily, you just meet the criteria, and there's some judgment by the planning board that's still out there.
Right. And they've indicated to us that, you know, we need to get the approval of this board also. So we understand that, you know, there's two different bylaw regulations. They say different things, and they're issued by different boards. So again, that's where indicated somewhat cumbersome, but...
Right, the I-7A-1 is a planning board reg. Not under our jurisdiction.
Correct.
But so functionally, if we granted, hypothetically granted, a special permit under I-84, they would still need the special permit from the planning board, right?
To proceed, then.
Yes. Exactly, without even talking about conservation commission.
Right. Just pure process.
Yep, exactly.
Well, a quick look at the lot, definition of lot. You don't have a definition of lot, there's no definition of lot area. But the definition of lot does not exclude wetlands. There is a provision in the floodplain district, but I assume this is not in that district, it's just in the B1.
Right. So water is not excluded.
Well, you know, you've got, I haven't read every page. But it's not in the usual places where women look at it, which is definitions, use, or, actually, I want to look at...
On page 60 and again.
Right, I want to look at the dimensional requirements, which I didn't get to yet.
All right, all right. Come ahead, we've got plenty of questions to ask.
Before I open this up to butters, and we've got a good-sized audience here tonight, are there additional questions from the board? We can always come back if you need some more time.
No, okay, I know the clarification.
All right, are you all comfortable if I open it up to questions from our audience tonight? All right, if you would, I... Yes, yeah, if you can grab the microphone and... All right, if you could identify yourself, please, and...
Hi, I'm Peter Diamond. I live at 84 Seekong Street. I'm here tonight to represent my father, who's an immediate butter at 114 Main Street to this project. His property is right here. The development part of this project is at 108 Main Street, which immediately abuts this. They are seeking special permit under section I-4A11, which you have the authority to grant that. See, if we look at the bylaws for I-7A1, that zoning bylaw is grantable under the Planning Board, which does seem like some sort of conflict that one board can grant power to put residential dwellings in, and you have the power to put the bedrooms in. So I find that confusing. First thing I'd like to point out is if you look at your bylaw E-1C5, if you can go to that bylaw. Your zoning bylaw books. E-1C5 says each lot shall have frontage access, the legal access to the property. Now neither of these lots have legal access to their property. They're sharing a driveway. Where it's split, the lots are split right down the middle of the driveway. And the access for 108 is a stride on 106, where the egress for 106 is on 108. So I find that to be a problem to start with there, along with the egress for the property of this magnitude with 50 houses. They only have one access going in. And they don't even have full access according to your bylaw, E-1C5. And I'd like to say, my father's against a special permit for a development this large. Zoning bylaw allows 16 bedrooms per lot. They want to put in 22 single-family homes with 44 bedrooms on the 108 lot, which is three times what's allowed by as-of-right zoning. Three times. And combined, they're talking 50 dwellings on the two lots. And that is three times what's allowed by zoning overall. Next, I'd like to go back to section I-4A11, which only allows 16 bedrooms. Now, they stated that it's 16 bedrooms for lot area, and it actually says 16 bedrooms for 5,000 square feet of land. And when you get to reviewing the plans, you'll see that the 22 houses at 108 Main Street is on about two acres of land, excluding the wetlands. If we look at the property overall, it's about 10 acres. And a third of the property with the 100-foot buffer zone is wetlands for the whole project. So the density is extreme where they're putting all the houses in the back. It's very extreme. I'd like to move along to the criteria, which is what the board goes by for granting the permit. There's six criteria. And I'd like to go over some of that criteria with you right now. G6C1 says that the use is in harmony with the general purpose of the bylaw. The general purpose of the bylaw comes under section A2, the purpose. Under that purpose, it states that the purpose of the bylaw is to lessen congestion in the streets, to secure safety. So I question safety with only one egress here of 50 houses. The congestion on our streets, we're talking about 500 passes a day, traffic in and out of here. That's going to cause major congestion on our streets in the downtown area. To conserve land is another item in the purpose. And I don't see how we're conserving land by, with a project. It's dense. And pollution of the environment. One of the special permits he's asking for is to go through the watershed protection area. And with the salt and everything used, I see as that possibly polluting the wetlands. When they build this road, there's trees down the middle. So all that's got to be taken out to put in that road. So then G6C2, and that criteria states that the use is in appropriate location and is not detrimental to the neighborhood and does not significantly alter the character of the zoning district. The proposed development's density under the special permit request will significantly alter the character of the neighborhood, which has been as such for more than 50 years. And I also further state that it will alter the character of our downtown area, where there's probably about 10 to 20 houses in this whole neighborhood. And now we're going to put 50 on this small section of land. If we move along to G6C3 of the criteria, states that adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use. While I say the developer's not providing adequate and appropriate parking, there's no parking for any visitors. The roads are narrow. The people are going to end up parking on the streets. That will be a hazard. So that, that will be a safety problem. Stormwater management is in question. The sidewalks are in question. And once again, the egress to the property is in question. If we move to criteria, G6C4, there it says that the proposed use would not be detrimental or offensive to the adjoining zoning districts and neighboring properties due to the effects of lighting, odors, smoke, noise, sewage, refuse materials, visual or other nuances. Nuisances, excuse me. The density proposed will adversely affect the adjoining districts and the neighboring properties due to the effects of lighting from all the new dwellings, the increase in noise from the density of the project, and the extreme visual change the neighborhood will undergo from the development's density once again. All right, and the last criteria I want to comment is G6C5, that the proposed use would not cause undue traffic congestion in the immediate area. That's the big one, because...
Try getting out of my driveway.
The traffic generated from this development, once again, has been calculated at more than 500 trips per day. This for certain will cause traffic congestion in the immediate area. So I want the board to consider all this, these criteria in their final determination for granting the special permit for this more than 16 bedrooms. All right. I would like to add a comment that I would like the Zoning Board of Appeals to recognize that at two previous recent Norfolk town meetings, one dated November 29th, 2012, Article 10, and May 8th Annual Meeting last year, 13, Article 12, where Warren Articles sought to amend bylaw I-4A11, which only allows the 16 bedrooms to 32. And both times at those town meetings, the people voted that down. They did not want more than 16 bedrooms. So I want you to recognize that the people in the town did not want this. Once again, I'm here representing my father, who's an immediate butter. This is going to severely impact him and his property. And he is adamantly against these applications for special permits, and he asked the board to deny them. Just want to make sure I got everything in here. I know this rule isn't under your bylaws. It's under the rules and regulations of the Planning Board. And Rule 4.14.10 describes a half-street as a portion of a proposed street running astride a common boundary line. So I know you, I believe you don't judge zoning bylaws according to the rules and regulations. But I want you to recognize that Rule 4.14.10 doesn't even allow this type of street where it's, one part of the street's astride on the other property, if you understand what I'm saying.
Is that from the purpose of a subdivision?
It's from the rules and regulations that the Planning Board use. It's in Section 4, and it's also in Section 8, the rules and regulations about having half-streets. So I guess the key things are, we're really against the density. It's just much too dense. The traffic is a big concern to myself and the rest of the people here. There's no place for people to park. There's only one entrance to 50 houses. We had an event in town where there was an explosion, and that property had three entrances. And the emergency personnel had a very difficult time getting into that. I can't imagine if there was catastrophic event here with only one entrance in. And they're asking for a 20-foot, two-foot wide entrance here for 50 houses. And I haven't even seen this plan officially. I think the plans they've submitted to you are different from these. So I'm not sure that you can even work off this. Recognize that, too. This plan is just a concept at this point, because what they submitted with the application is in front of you. I think that's all I've got to say. Do you have any questions for me about my interpretations of the zoning? I had one more thing to add. When you, when you grant the 16, more than 16 bedrooms, was that intended for the as-of-right zoning that's allowed in this district? That's a question I have, too. Was the intention of that zoning bylaw that grants you permission to give special permit for more than 16 bedrooms? Typically, as-of-right zoning in the B-1 would allow a commercial development with residential above. That's as-of-right zoning, that's allowed. But no more than 16 bedrooms per lot. So was that put into the zoning bylaws to allow more than 16 bedrooms for that? Or are you in a position to grant more than 16 bedrooms for something that another board's going to decide on? I don't understand all that.
Pat, can you weigh in on that?
Sure, let me, let me go back to the other question, though, about the buildable area. In section E-1F, continuous buildable area. That's a fairly dense paragraph, but I think I read it to say that at least 60% of the lot, the minimum lot area required for zoning purposes shall be contiguous land other than that located, and this is in the middle of the paragraph, within an area identified as floodplain, wetlands, as defined and identified on the plan, et cetera. So it does seem to me that in terms of looking at whether a lot is buildable, the part of the lot that is buildable, you do exclude that much of the area as qualifies under, basically, the State Wetlands Act and the Towns Wetlands bylaw. So that's section E-1F. Okay, so then the other question, as I think I understand it, is in the business core, outside the business core district, allowed uses 1.7A are the uses that are allowed by right. And then there is a, and then 1.7A1 are special permit by the Planning Board. And then B is by the Zoning Board of Appeals. So I guess I'm a little bit confused because we're at the ZBA and not the Planning Board. And the residential dwelling part of, the special permit for residential dwellings is really within the jurisdiction of the Planning Board, not the ZBA. And the special permit for the ZBA is car rentals, conversion, gasoline, et cetera. And I don't see how the, I mean, maybe I'm missing something here. I don't see how the use that's being presented here is a use that's your special permit. So I guess I have a question for the applicant. What am I missing? Where, why are they here? I mean, they're going to have to go to the Planning Board for the residential dwelling, and then it will be up to the Planning Board to decide how that section gets interpreted and applied. What am I missing?
What are you saying, that 1.7, I-7A1 is the Planning Board purview? That has to be determined first before we can determine density, or...
Quite confusing, isn't it?
Well, no, it doesn't matter which comes first. I mean, you know, if you need two various permits from various boards, it's up to the applicant to, you know, choose which one they go for first. I mean, ultimately, at the end of the day, they need, they need whatever permits they need from all the boards in order to proceed. But it's not a question of, you know, the board saying, no, you have to go to them first. I mean, I think that really is the purview of the applicant to decide, you know, how they want to structure the proceedings in terms of the applications. So, I mean, an allowed use by right is residential dwelling units as part of a commercial site plan. It's the last, well... Or then the other is above the ground floor of buildings. And as I've listened, I don't think there's any commercial development that's proposed here, right? This is all residential.
It is.
So I don't think that it qualifies under I-7A as a by-right use. The special permit for the density is the Planning Board's special permit, and the special permit uses by the Board of Appeals, those aren't being proposed here. So what am I missing?
Where were you reading from, you're reading what?
I'm reading from pages 68 and 69 of the bylaw.
What about I-4A11?
I-7A and I-7A1 and I-7B. Okay, I-4...
I-4A11.
I-4A11.
Page 66.
Bottom of the page.
Yeah. Bottom of the page? Third one down on page 66 at the top.
Oh, I see. Okay, residential... Residential, except for, shall not have more than two bedrooms per unit. Residential shall not have... Shall not have, blah, blah, blah. This is living. Okay. Shall not have more.
And resident, both.
Oh, okay. Except by special permits. Okay. Got it. All right. So then, and I assume somewhere it says, special permit from the ZBA.
Well, it doesn't. It says in the, in the front of the granting authority for a special permit is you people. When it doesn't really specify.
When it doesn't specify, okay.
When it doesn't specify, you're the granting authority for special permit. If you read the end, it says special permit by the planning board for assisted living.
Okay, right. By the, by the ZBA. Okay. All right. So, all right. So thank you. Okay. So the question is?
Well, I can reiterate the question. My question was, your authority to grant more than 16 bedrooms would seem to only apply to as-of-right zoning, which comes under, was it I-7B or I-7A, I believe? The allowed uses. The allowed uses. So that was my question. I found that quite confusing studying your zoning bylaws, that are you granting special permit for more than 16 bedrooms relevant to the allowed uses? Will you, you follow me?
So you're basically saying that unless it's an allowed use, to begin with, the ZBA can't grant the additional density, and that it's not an allowed use because there's no commercial element.
That's my angle. I'm asking you.
Well, I, I, you know, I, it's up to the ZBA to interpret the bylaw.
I know.
I mean, you know, I think that's a reasonable interpretation. Somebody else can make another argument, and that could also be a reasonable interpretation. I'm not going to say, you know, at this point, what the ZBA should do. I think it's for them to think about and listen and decide what's, what is reasonable. I mean, I think that there are, you know, as I've just sort of struggled through, looking through these sec, I mean, you guys have looked at this, you know, much more detail than I have. But, you know, it does, there are a bunch of pieces here. And how they all fit together is a bit of a puzzle. So I don't, you know, it's not something that I could just say, oh, yeah. This, I mean, the definition, as we got to continuous buildable area, that's clear, that's there. I don't think there's any question about this. The way that these other subsections fit together, I think, is a question of interpretation and what, what the board thinks is reasonable.
That's where I'd like to chime in. Because on your interpretation, in your interpretation section of your bylaws, it says the lesser rule shall prevail. I think it's in your interpretation. I don't have that in front of me right now. But if you go to interpretation, I believe it says the less stringent, I mean, the, the more stringent rule should prevail.
Well, that's why I think you do have to look at the bylaw as a whole. And I certainly could be prepared to do that, but I, I'm actually not going to do that off the top of my head.
We could kind of table that and dig into that a little bit deeper.
Do you want me to do that?
No, we can do that.
No, I think you should think it through first.
Yeah, we want to think that through.
Yeah, you want to think it through, and you want to look at it. And then if you want to frame a question to me, I'd be glad to address it, you know, that way. But I think you should look at it first.
All right. Mr. Chipman, do you want to respond to some of this conversation?
Hi, Peter Chipman. I'm representing a proponent for 106 Main Street, Michaela Realty Trust. First of all, a little history behind the dense housing zoning. This was proposed back in May of 2010. There was a planning board hearing at that time, the first week of May. It was either the 6th or the 8th. There was no one at that time that even came to the zoning change planning board hearing. Betsy Figgel in the planning board office has a current tape that can be reviewed. The proposed zoning change for dense housing was to develop the walkable downtown. It was to hopefully create help for the commercial zoning district. And at that time, when the zoning bylaw study committee was considering this, I believe that a member, the building enforcement officer, Bob Bullock at the time, purposely did not limit it to strictly upland or wetland. So I just wanted to clarify those points. Secondly, a point made up by one of the abutters, which is his right, the discussion at the last one or two town meetings about increasing bedroom density was strictly for the B1 district within the core. It had nothing to do with outside the business core, which is a reason why we created this district at that time. Historically, and we went through almost a purging over the last several town meetings because the B1 district had a pile-on conflicting series of bylaws, and I know the existing chairman of the ZBA, Michaelisa, was part of it, that we actually literally either got rid of or reassigned to the planning board because it became so cumbersome and so conflicted that you got to points like we are tonight. So at least I wanted to clear up a lot of the misconceptions that I think has been put forward as far as, as it goes to with the dense housing district. Thank you.
I got a rebuttal.
Mr. Chairman? Do I see a hand go up? Yes, sir. Mr. Spru.
My name is Art Spru. I live at 11 Stanish Road in Norfolk. I was, I'm a professional engineer. I was on the planning board for 17 years. It was part of what created the zoning in this district, the planning, how we established all the pieces that are out there today, and somewhat of what you have here in front of you. Little bit more information on this. When we first tried to create a rezoning in the core district of downtown, our limiting factor was our infrastructure. So until we solved that, it didn't matter what we had zoning-wise. So that was solved in two ways. One, a stormwater system was built by the town. And two, a treatment plan for wastewater was built by the developer. Now, the same issue was happening when we're trying to expand the same concept into this area here. I was part of looking at that background of what it was going to take to provide support on the infrastructure side. It's real nice to say you can do this type of zoning, and they went ahead with that part of it, but the town never followed up on their piece on the infrastructure support. The stormwater system was supposed to be a part, an integral part, of making this happen. Because the two things that you would have to do without a new treatment facility or another way to relieve stormwater is all the stormwater has to be held on site and treated. And then so, same thing with the wastewater treatment system. Quite frankly, when the recession hit, I was off the board. That whole thing got dropped. There was actually a treatment facility, which was being considered on the other side of the tracks over here. There was a lot of planning that was done. There was a lot of investment by the town to actually do this. Without those two things in place, none of this development on a higher density level could occur. So you should really think carefully about granting higher density without that supportive infrastructure. And believe me, that was a huge, huge issue, why we couldn't even do what we're doing in downtown right now. So please take that as part of your interest in checking your special criteria.
Okay. Other questions or comments from the abutters? Yes, sir. Please identify yourself.
Good evening. Paul Colby, 105 Main Street. I am directly across the street from the proposed driveway. Although I have, I don't object to the use for the condo space, it really is the density that we're discussing here. And that's the core element of this. And so from the, from the aspects of both the traffic, everything that Peter Diamond has said, I think, you know, all the waivers that are being asked for here, we have to look at this with the clear intent of making sure that it fits the site and fits where it sits. From my perspective, having a driveway across the street, traffic is a huge issue. There are waivers asked for, for traffic studies, which cannot be done. And, and, you know, from conservation issues because of the wetlands, the thinness of the road, there, you asked about the parking, where the parking is, that's also where the snow's going to go. You know, so they have no other place to put the snow, other than where the excess parking is going to be. So it does create problems even for Main Street, where the traffic could be, the parking could be forced back out into Main Street, which have no barriers for parking on Main Street. So this becomes a fairly broad issue. And so I want to make sure that all, you know, as we go through this process, all due intent is put to it. The zoning board has its rules and regulations, whatever the, I would assume the planning board's rules are, you have to apply your rules to this process. And at, at the level that is prescribed, a 16-bedroom, it fits that site and works from that perspective. And I think that's one of the things we do have to look at.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Rosenberg.
David Rosenberg, 123 North Street. The reason I'm here is I'm concerned about the density. I feel that the selection of 16 bedrooms per lot is reasonable and was set for, for a specific reason. And my concerns of exceeding that are infrastructure, not only of the type that Mr. Spru mentioned, but also infrastructure of the type of police, availability of police protection, fire protection, schools. And my concern is that this strains the town in a number of dimensions. The availability of water, the availability of wastewater, the, as I said, police, fire, schools. And I fear that it overstresses the town, and therefore I would recommend that the board deny the application for special permits.
Thank you.
I'm Bob Nicadema, 7 Diamond Street. I was a member, in fact, director of master plan that created a lot of what we're seeing in the way of zoning now. I've been on the zoning bylaw study committee, which tried to package some of this information. And I also, under the economic development committee, have had an opportunity to understand the issue of density. I do think that the infrastructure issues need to be solved, but I think they need to be solved by the planning board and not by the zoning board of appeals. I do believe that the issue here as to compliance with zoning is one of finalizing how the density that is proposed could comply with the units on a 5,000-square-foot layout. You can't see it. It's not shown. They're saying it just mathematically can be made true. That's the only issue that I see that would be difficult to make a judgment on without some further development of information than what is here tonight. I do think this density is possible under the way the zoning is written. I'm just not sure that it's possible in the layout that is shown, but I don't know that. I'm just making a comment.
Mr. Dick, could you elaborate on that, Bob, for me? What do you mean that?
If you wanted to take the effort to identify 5,000-square-foot lot diagram program and how the unitization of the property could comply with that, mathematically, it says it would happen. Geometrically, that might be true. It might not. I don't know. I'm just saying that I know that under the master plan and in part of the zoning that we wrote, we gave the ability for the applicant to demonstrate compliance in one of two ways. And this judgment here tonight is because the math works, it should be approved. This is the density that the economic development committee and the master plan committee assumed could occur in the town without infrastructure. That's, that's our opinion at this point in time. Layout-wise, they're asking you to accept mathematical opinion as a basis for that, and that may be possible, or you may want some more diagrammatic analysis to prove that.
You know what? I could have a little bit of a question. Go ahead. Sure. Mr. Dick, can I ask you a question about what you just said? With respect to infrastructure and the whole planning that went in, that you folks did in determining these zones and so forth, in, in what you said, was you said that you felt that, that without improvement in infrastructure, this would work. But the "this would work," is, is there any number? Can you quantify the amount of housing that would work without an infrastructure improvement? Because the only number that we have is 16.
Right. Or you could.
So supposedly you said, we're going to build a tower here. Well.
You're allowed to go three stories if you wanted to, density-wise, because that's the height that's allowed here. And in those three stories, you could consolidate development to allow that. And in that kind of situation, you would have to identify your density based on, bedrooms? Your bedroom density based on 5,000-square-foot unit type somehow. I'm not here to say how to lay it out. I'm simply saying that the math said that this much property, one way or another, could get to a density that we're seeing. And the infrastructure that's shown here now, according to what I've heard at the planning board meetings, both from a sanitary standpoint and a stormwater standpoint, is going to comply with planning board rules and regulations. If the infrastructure that was proposed, that Mr. Spru talked about had occurred, this density could have been developed, and there would have been a different zoning bylaw because you would have been allowed to have three times the density that is currently allowed. When the zoning was, when, when the town decided not to go forward with infrastructure in 2010, that's when this became the maximum you can do with the land and have all infrastructure integral to the land you're working with.
So the maximum 16 bedrooms, but for a special permit?
That works as well as the per lot. And the per lot being 5,000 allowed you to get higher density.
Okay. So whichever way, but we don't know about, about the, about the 5,000, because, because although mathematically you can figure it out, from a practical and physical standpoint, we don't really know what that means.
That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a few points.
Sure.
If I could, to address some of the comments, in no particular order, I'd like to address a few things. There was a question on what the buildable lot area is, and should it exclude the wetland area? I just want to point out that under Section E1F, all that is doing is indicating that at least 60% of your lot area has to be upland in order to qualify for the minimum zoning requirement. So if, if, for instance, the zoning requirement was one acre, at least 60% of that one acre has to be upland area. It's, it's not speaking to what is the lot area itself. And otherwise, in Section I-7A1, it talks about that the residential density is 5,000 square feet of land. It's not, it's not talking about lot area. Furthermore, we had, you know, going through the planning board site plan approval process, Gino Carlucci, consultant for the planning board, provided comments, again, it was to the planning board, but. but he had noted that there was no differentiation between wetland or, you know, having to exclude wetland area from our calculation. So I believe we're able to use the entire parcel area in determining our calculations.
Again, is that a planning board issue?
The lot area?
The, yeah, the...
I-7A1.
Is, I-7A1, is it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we're seeking a special permit from the planning board for that. And again, simultaneously, we're here. And that actually segues to a good point. Again, this is not the first plan that has been presented to the planning board. The prior proposals, there was originally going to be four three-story apartment buildings on this site, the 106 Main site, a total of 43 units. And the 108 Main site was originally proposed as a total of 26 duplex-style homes, 13 buildings, duplexes. So I believe it was partly, and again, this was prior to my involvement, but I understand that it was partly due to a butter concerns. At that time, the projects were scaled back and made more similar in these single detached or duplex-style homes. And I'd just like to bring up another point, too, as to justifying the lot density that we have, or the unit density. This is another plan that I sketched out. And what I've attempted to show here is, under the bylaw, Section I-4A2, there's a planned multi-lot development section. The applicants have chosen not to do this, but by, I'm just looking to demonstrate what we might have done alternatively. We could have put in a subdivision roadway that would meet the town's standards. And then there would be three lots, a minimum of 40,000 square foot each on the 108 Main's site. And on the 106 Main would have four lots. And on each of these lots, we could put eight units on each for a total of 56 units with two bedrooms. There could be three-story apartment buildings on each one, or garden-style flat condominiums, whatever. But, so again, I just want to demonstrate that we could do up to 112 bedrooms by a configuration like that. Again, the applicants have chosen not to do this. They're looking to keep it as a single condominium on each site. This would require four separate condominiums. It gets more cumbersome that way. So I feel this is a simpler layout. And again, we're below those densities that we could otherwise do on this plan, so...
With approval by the planning board?
Yes, ma'am.
Mary Schiller, 109 Main Street. I just have a question. I haven't even completed the plan, so how can you approve it before you know what the completed plan is going to be?
I just want to point out, that's the wetlands themselves. So I'm not sure why this is, would be considered underwater, but there's significant upland areas on those parcels. Does that cover the 60%? It's not 60%. You don't, the lot, they're not valid lots. It simplifies that.
Yes, ma'am.
Nancy Conners, Everett Street.
I've lived in town for 52 years, and I think this is one of the most detrimental developments that this town has had. I really am concerned that it just is not what Norfolk has been and hopefully can continue to be. I think we've covered carefully. Peter Diamond did an excellent job with the background to this, showing you how difficult this is and how wrong it truthfully is. But to add 16, to add more bedrooms to something that doesn't, to me, even belong there is just a traffic... It's already been brought up that this is obviously not in the harmony with the zoning bylaws, which is a requirement that your board must meet. There's no need of going into it further. You can see it's not in harmony. It's going to be a traffic problem, it's going to be a drain on our limited water, it's going to be expense possibly for schoolchildren, and a more of a demand on our fire and police. We're just not ready for something like this. And certainly to add bedrooms, which is what we're here for tonight, despite all the extra time we've been here, is what we're here for, is about extra bedrooms. And I don't think they belong. Thank you for listening.
Yes, ma'am.
Carol Cuneta, 99 Main Street. And I just wanted to state that, as in a butter, my main opposition really is the traffic situation and the safety. I can't come out of my driveway during rush hour as it is. And I can't imagine all the people coming out of that development, how they're going to get out. I can't imagine waiting for the traffic to turn left, to get into my driveway. You know, when the train comes through and everybody exits the parking lots, there's a big traffic jam in town. And I just, you know, we bought our property in 2011 because it has six acres of land. And we were interested in the quiet nature of the neighborhood and the town and the privacy that it affords. I just don't think that granting a special permit to make something that's already allowed to be dense even more dense makes any sense to any of the neighbors. So, thank you.
Jim Tomaszewski, 33 Berkshire Street. This is probably more of the issue for the planning board, but from a public safety issue, the entrances was spoken to, it's one way in, one way out. You know, I was at the scene when the explosion happened at the condo complex on 115 that day. And the difficulty for all the public safety, whether it was police or fire, to get in and out of there that day when the explosion happened, was extremely difficult. And they had three ways to get in and out. And that's one of the reasons why we put the access road in for the new school. And because both chiefs for many years have been really wanting that because they wanted, in case there was a problem on Boardman Street, how in the world will we get into the school? So that's one of the reasons we put that in there. And I remember when this was first brought up, about maybe four or five years ago. Yes, we did want more density in the area so it would help the growth of the commercial business in downtown, but we didn't anticipate this amount of density. So that's why I think we should just leave it as it is.
Mr. Chipman?
Hi, Peter Chipman. Thank you, Mr. Chipman. In answer to the fire safety, I'm reading from an October 30, 2013 memo directly relating to this single entrance from Chief Cole Bushnell. And access to the site via a single private way from Main Street is acceptable as this access patent mirrors conditions found at Arnold Road as an exemplar. That is from your fire chief situation.
Peter, what's...
Secondly, you know, some of these other concerns, and they're okay to be brought up, but, you know, you have to back them up with facts. People talking about distressing on the water. And I take these things seriously. So I spent some time with Phil McNulty, the PE for the DPW, handling our water department. Phil explained to me in great detail that we're in year three of a 20-year water management plan is required to be filed with DEP. He said that we're currently at a permit level of 530,000 gallons per day draw, of which we normally hit above 400,000. He did not see this as an issue at this time.
Sure, 400,000, you said?
400,000 is the number that Phil McNulty, the DE, gave me.
And he said that we have a capacity of 530?
Our daily permit allows us to 530,000 G.
Do you have more hands, Mike? No, okay. Yes, ma'am.
Connie Markout, 101 Main Street. Just in rebuttal to that, I mean, it's not fact, but every year we have a water ban in Norfolk. And by 4:00, 5:00 o'clock in the afternoon, our water coming out of faucet isn't like it is in the morning. So you can't tell me that there's no water issue in Norfolk. And then to bring all these houses and everything in, it's just going to be such a strain. So that's not fact, but why do we have a water ban every year? I'd like to know. I'm sure you have an answer for that.
The only answers I have to it are the ones that the water department professional engineer gave me. And quite honestly, we've always had a water ban, but not only the water bans, but also fixing leaking pipes and other mitigation measures that are required by the DEP to tighten up our water usage on a global basis are just considered big pluses for the town. Why it's always been a water ban, I do not know. I've only lived here 20 years, and I have no idea why your water pressure is what it is. I would bring it up with Mr. McNulty. Seems like a nice guy to deal with.
Yes, Betsy.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Whitney, 26 Valley Street in Pondville. There's a lot of development going on down in my end of town. And the older I get, the more I live by some of the adages that were spoken to me as I was growing up, "All things in moderation," seems to ring true the longer I live. And as I have seen, I haven't lived in town as long as Nancy, but I'm getting closer. I have seen lots of changes. And I have accepted many of them in Pondville, and I've tried to be actually good-natured about it. I have tried very hard to do my part to make sure that Pondville just, in my opinion, not that I'm the boss, but I do, I do care, and I live right in the middle of it, that we maintain a modicum of moderation. And the word "unit," I did get right down to the planning department, and I said, "Could you explain this to me as it refers to some bylaw changes on Valley Street, which are very important to me?" I wanted to know what constituted a unit, how big could a building be? And I have become concerned about the word "density." And it's okay, as so many things in life, if moderation is maintained. I'm very nervous about 106, 108 Main Street. I think, what I hear tonight, and I haven't attended a meeting where there have been so many people, I have been curious to hear. And it seems as if there is a general feeling that they know it was, it is within the zoning laws to have this development in the B1 section. But I submit to you that "all things in moderation" is something that we've all heard all our lives. And it makes sense. And I just wish that we would think about that very simple cliche in thinking about density. And thank you very much.
Yes, Andrea?
Andrea Langhauser, 49 Noonhill Avenue. It seems that this is one of the few places I've seen so many former planning board members, even with Tibby Maitland here earlier. So I have to speak. One thing is that I don't envy your job. Not only are you here at 11:20 hearing this, but I haven't heard an argument made by the applicant's team other than there's another law on the books for density in this area that would say this is okay, therefore you should look to the question you're being asked and say, "It's okay, too." And I'm sure that's not your normal presentation. I'm sure you usually get much better information on the criteria of the special permit when you are asked a question and you're asked to make some changes here. And it's the 16 bedrooms is the specific question that came to the town meeting twice. And that specific question was denied twice by town meeting. Granted, there may not have been many more people at those town meetings than are here tonight, but all these people are here tonight at 11 o'clock. And like me, they're probably going to go to work in the morning. So, I mean, they're here because this is a lot for this area. And I was on the planning board for the 16 units. I was on the planning board for the, you know, one unit per 5,000. Those are apples and oranges. I agree, I actually never heard Bob Bullock say that he thought that the density was meant to be straight land, whether it was upland or lowland, because that is inconsistent with your special permit criteria. You can't have, you can't have a density that includes land that you can't build on and say it can be used in determining density. So I know that when I was on the planning board, we took, we took the acreage to mean the acreage you use when you determine density for a subdivision, which is what your town council read. So in terms of special time, in terms of the special permit criteria, I couldn't do a better job than Mr. Diamond. And I just hope that if my son ever gets put in that situation, he does as good a job. But he probably, it'd be hard, it'd be hard. I just wanted to thank him for his work and for you guys for coming out tonight.
Thank you. Bill Kelly at 76 Main Street. I've lived there for 46 years, seen a lot of changes in town. And right now, it takes forever to get out of my driveway during commute time. And I think a project of this size would really, really increase the traffic, especially when the trains get out at night. And being in the public safety business for 22 years, that could be a problem also, traffic during that time period, if you add these units into that Main Street. So I want to go in record saying that I oppose a project of this size.
Just to add on, Jack McFeely, 10 Chicago Tobit. Just to add on what Bill was just saying. It's not only the driveways that I'd be concerned about. I go through one of the worst intersections in town and could hardly get through sometimes down at Seekonk and Needham, where Main Street crosses. And I think some of you know the intersection and know how difficult it is just to get through there sometimes. And there's been a lot of accidents there at that intersection. And that needs to be studied before you even think about doing something like this.
Ron Ober, 69 Main Street. I've been in town 52 years, seen a lot of changes. Someone asked about backing up thoughts and feelings with facts. Took a ride the other day and counted houses from Dunkin' Donuts to that intersection, which is horrendous. And that's going to require infrastructure there also when this project gets going. So we can't, if it... No, to the prison. I'm sorry. To the prison. There are, just on Main Street, there are 30 houses. Doesn't sound too bad. I think there's 32. Okay. But what we haven't mentioned is the side streets. Alice Avenue, you may just as well say that that's a driveway, you know? So there's 50 houses between Alice, Norwell, Spring Street. Okay? And they're kind of a forgotten area down there. They try to get out of their driveways onto Main Street. They also try to get out of their driveways on Needham Street, which is horrific. So adding more density with the project, any design of the project, okay, to what exists already, I think is a nightmare, to be honest with you. I did not count, but I might do that, from the bridge to the Franklin Line. You can't forget that either. Those cars are going to keep on, you don't know where they're going. You know, they could go to supermarkets in Franklin, they can go to Walpole, who knows where they're going. But the fact of the matter is, we have a nightmare in the making for traffic. Believe me, 52 years tells me that. Trying to get out of my driveway. And I live across the street from Kelly's. He even gets in my way.
Mr. Eglisen, 249 Main Street. I have counted the cars on several occasions for one hour in the morning. There's up to 400 cars go by my house in an hour. That's a huge amount. But what I wanted to say is that last night, at the Board of Selectment meeting, Bob McGee went to talk to them about the budget. And currently, we're putting aside $10,000 to buy water from Rentham, because we are really concerned about how much water we're going to have to maintain the houses that we have in town. And 80% of the leaks have been fixed, so we're not losing any more water from the leaks. And we are being very pressed for water.
Just one other comment regarding water. Okay, it was noted to us to think about the fact that our allowance is, what, Mr. Chipman, what was our allowance of water?
We mentioned that allowance was 100,000 gallons or something. Daily drop?
Yeah.
The daily drop for Mr. McNulty was 530,000 gallons per day.
530,000 gallons per day. The engineers, the architects, whoever else is working on this project, how many gallons is the project going to be using per day? I haven't heard that mentioned. Is the water coming from our municipal supply? Or are we going to tap into the groundwater? What's going on? Water's a big issue, and we don't have enough of it. You know, you feel like a criminal if you turn your faucet on in your house, you know? Honestly, I mean, we really do. And I think that's a huge issue on density. I've got other thoughts on what's driving this thing, okay? I'll keep them to myself tonight.
Did you gentlemen want to respond to the water source?
Right. The water demand is figured on the number of bedrooms. At 100 bedrooms, it's 110 gallons per day, so it would be at 11,000 gallons total for the two sides.
11,000 gallons? Excuse me.
Is that per day?
Yes. 100 bedrooms times 110 gallons per day per bedroom.
Other questions?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
We've got two bedrooms, so one of them will be with children. Children will be going to soccer and sports, and mother will be going in and out. I'm just thinking, the two bedrooms, one bedroom has children in it, and they will be going to sports, soccer, and every other kind of entertainment, after school and all summer. So we have to think of those mothers bringing the soccer kids in and out. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions from the board?
No additional questions.
All right, we'll make a last call for questions or comments before we wrap this up tonight.
Just one last comment. I think Mr. Nicodemus brought up the master plan, which I've viewed a little bit. The master plan was done in 2007. In the master plan, I'll read a couple of quotes from the master plan here. One of the deficiencies that's recognized in the master plan is Norfolk currently receives 94% of its tax revenues from residential property. And it would be important for commercial growth. So we're going to take land that's in the B1 district, which is, could be used for commercial growth, and now we're going to put residential dwellings on 10 acres of land that could be designated for business development. So that's in our master plan. I don't understand why we'd want to develop it to residential land. We only have so much land uptown, so I want the board to recognize that. And they do talk about water in here. Until I get to the water, let's talk about goal number two is encourage maximum business, commercial development, redevelopment within the B1 Town Center zoning district. Once again, with the master plan, which Mr. Nicodemus worked on, they worked on wanting business development downtown, not residential. All right, then we're going to talk about deficiency number one, which on page 35. Norfolk's water capacity is inadequate for any added demand and water supply infrastructure done. Infrastructure does not fully serve all areas of town, especially those vacant land areas projected to expand over the next 10 years. Now, this was done in 2007. We're seven years later, and I don't believe we've added another well yet, that I know of. And there's been development since 2007 that's taxed our water system. The town still needs to put in one or two new wells. Once again, it says on goal number three, expand Norfolk's water supply sources for emergency and interim demand for municipal drink and water and fire protection services. So there's another consideration on low water supply. If there's a fire, we could be short on water pressure and supply for a fire in an emergency. And those are my final comments. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. All right. I think we've given everyone an opportunity to weigh in on this initial hearing tonight. What time is it? 11:33? You missed the news. I missed the news.
11:33.
11:32, all right. All right, this is our first look at this project. This is a big project, and we've taken in a lot of information tonight.
Do we know which plan they want us to?
Well, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to address that too. So I think, well, two things. We want to continue this hearing and set a date for the continuing, continuation of this. There's just, we took in a lot of information tonight, took in a lot of testimony tonight. And I think we need some time to study this, absorb it, think about it, evaluate it. And then the second piece of this is, when you do come back to see us, when we schedule the continuation, you should have a decision on which way you want to go. If we're going to grant special permits, we should have a formal plan. You know, you alluded to, this is the one that we've been presented as part of your application process. You had a conceptual up there tonight. If the conceptual is going to be the one that you're, is part of your submission, we should have that as, as part of the record.
So I'd like to submit that to them.
Okay. All right, so you do have that as?
Yes.
So this is beyond a conceptual. This will be?
It's the concept plan at the bottom there.
Okay. All right. All right, so we got... All right, so. What's that?
We've acknowledged the petitions we received. Into the record.
All right, so these need to be, we have, what are these?
These are the butters. They're the petitions that we signed.
Okay, just for everybody here, we have, this folder contains peer review of site plan from the Planning Board Engineers, peer review of site plan by the Planning Board Engineers, comments on the site plan, memorandum from Bob McGee, memorandum of design review from Stephen Olson, PE Environmental Partners, design review, Stephen Olson, letter 106 from the Conservation Commission hearing dated January 7th, letter dated from the Conservation Commission, email from Chief Stone dated January 29th, comments on development at 106, 108 Main Street, letter from Peter Diamond, letter from Peter Diamond. Also included a 33 written petitions in opposition to the proposed project. So these, all of the documents that I just listed would be entered into the record for public review. So we will stamp and enter these into the public record.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Oops, I can do it now.
Here's Richard Connors, 30 Everett Street. In your consideration for the next meeting, could we ask for an earlier time? I know you guys are here, but we served our time starting supposedly at 9 o'clock, and we'd like to stop, you know, like 7:00, and be reasonable. All these people have to go to, some of them are workers, not me, but some of them are workers. So if you could consider that, we all would appreciate it.
What do we?
Mike, do you still need me, do you think?
No, you're, you're, you want to take off?
Yeah, is that okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, unless you want, all right, you'll let me know if there's anything for the, for the continuation, though, if anything.
We can't do all this on the 5th. I was just kidding. We have to set another date.
16th or 23rd of April.
How about another meeting in March?
Does March fulfill? I think it's 16th or 23rd.
We're going to make sure you're back, Dylan.
Yeah, what's this "we"?
Yeah, we'll make sure you're back. I'm only going for one week, Joe. Anyway, the recoup.
Yeah, let me just throw that calendar over.
Okay, thank you for helping.
Do we have?
Pending, pending.
March 5th.
Bob, could we not have two meetings in March?
We will.
Is that what you're saying? Yeah, two in March, instead of two meetings.
Are you asking if we are going to have two meetings?
Could we? Oh, okay.
I'm going half a month. So the 5th, we have a scheduled meeting, and we've got...
About two weeks later, one week later.
So what about the 26th? The 1, 2, 3, 4th Wednesday, yeah.
About the 19th, or is...
3rd Wednesday? You want to do the 12th, March 12th? Yeah, 3rd Wednesday. When's Easter?
Or the 5th Wednesday? Is there a 5th Wednesday? You don't want to have them right after another night?
Oh, okay, okay, all right. So, all right, so we're looking at March 12th, so what do we mean, okay.
Right now, we have the 5th, so we have a lot of decisions after the 5th.
You know, a large number of butters and other concerns, that we could have a separate meeting independent of this, other scheduled meetings, could we have a scheduled meeting, given the enormity of the material, scale of the project, the concerns about wait time and everything else?
That's what we're doing.
Yeah, this meeting will be dedicated solely to this.
For any time of the year, possibly in February, when, you know, we're still coordinated with other boards as well. And this is a key component.
The last, last Wednesday of February, you're gone, right?
We, I'm, I'm gone for two weeks, those two weeks. We've got other members that are out that last week. February is just a tough month for us to get the number of people we need together. We looked at the calendar before this, this hearing tonight to try to figure out when our, you know, our follow-up meeting would be. And February is, yeah, we've got the 5th. Unfortunately, the March 12th is the soonest we'll be able to do that, and would be dedicated solely to this.
We have the Conservation meeting on the 12th that we're going through. March 12th.
What about the 19th? That's our normal meeting, isn't it?
The 12th is our normal meeting. Why would Conservation be on the 12th?
They would need the 2nd and the...
They need special one.
Yeah. That's the date they gave us.
The 19th would be the 3rd Wednesday. Isn't that the one?
Yeah, it should be the 19th.
19th, I think, Mike, you just got the wrong week.
Yes. Unfortunately, that's the soonest we're going to be able to cram this in.
What date is that? March 19th.
You hear?
That's a Wednesday, March 19th, and we'll...
Motion?
A motion to schedule this at 7:45.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing for McKellar Realty Trust and the Pastor Development Group for March 19th, 7:45, to discuss the special permits in the B1 district.
Second.
Second. Hold on, favor?
Give it to him.
Aye.
Thank you.
So what do we get there?
Maybe.
So we have to close the public meeting?
No, we don't close.
We have, we still have to close tonight, don't we?
Close.
This meeting, yeah. Oh, yeah, you mean, yeah. You mean just to...
Yeah, we're going to...
We're going to stay all night.
We do want to knock off that, yeah, the Coons, the Cooney? Yeah, Cooney.
Cooney, yeah.
Cooney. No, we're not going to knock off Cooney. Cooney we didn't close.
Right now?
The one that's, no, you want to knock off Woo Woo?
The gun? Woo, Cooney we didn't close.
Which one did you want to just knock off in three seconds?
He wants to Woo Woo then.
What's her name?
No, we closed Woo Woo.
Which one was that?
He wants to finish Woo Woo, I guess. Was that the one where the three separate lots? Yeah, trust, yeah, yeah.
We can't deliberate a quarter.
You want to do it?
We're trying to deliberate Woo Woo?
Yeah.
Oh, come on, let's get it over with. What's another 20 minutes?
We got to talk to her. She's got a...
Oh, yeah, was it Woo Woo?
She's got a lot of fun.
Woo is the multifamily.
Yeah.
What's that? Woo Woo, which, which one is?
Woo, he's saying is easy.
Yeah, you're right, yeah, the Woo Woes. Oh, the multifamily. Why don't we just?
That's the, that's the easy one.
That's the easy one.
Right.
Yeah, I understand, I apologize.
Let's, even though, I, I mean, let's, how long will this take?
I know.
Do we have time to debate that?
I think we do, but I don't think we do.
We need, I think we need more time to debate Woo afterwards.
I don't think it's as clear as it comes to be. We got 1945, we got 1968, we got 1933.
I don't have a...
I'm not convinced.
Here's, here's a, dude, please, listen.
I'm not convinced. I am absolutely not convinced on Woo Woo. We have legal precedent.
What's that? There is no legal precedent. There's none.
There has to be.
No, there really doesn't have to be.
All right, we can.
All right, all right. Listen, let's...